Okay, we may as well get started. We're gonna have, you know, city commission coordination meeting for the next hour before we start the legislative session, so we'll just kick off with the city manager with your input.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, commissioners. See everybody. Join this warmer weather. Don't have a lot to cover with you tonight, but just a few things. We did have, get a sales tax report which, for February, which essentially reflects December sales, and they were down a little bit compared to 2020 of February, about 110,000. Comp city use taxes were up about 3,700. The good news is, is we had budgeted less, so we ended up just a little bit ahead of budget. So that was a good thing. And for the year, we're, we're pretty close. After two months, we're about 82, $83,000 ahead of budget, and about this time last year, we're about 79,000 ahead. So that was kind of before everything started that following month. So certainly could have been worse, but didn't see a big Christmas bump, and I thought there might be a correction on some of the TIF revenue, but there, there really, there was one actually, so good. So before it was reported that there was only about 20,000 and some in that January report, so that was, that's been up to 60, so that was good. We also, if you've gone down Seventeenth Street lately, you've probably seen some Martin Luther King Jr. drive signs, so those are going up. And I think all but maybe the big intersection at Anderson and Seventeenth has been installed at this point, and I didn't know, commissioners, if there was any kind of ceremonial component or anything that you all want to do relative to that, but I thought I'd throw it out there. We'd be happy to try and organize. I'm not sure exactly what it'd be. We have that one remaining sign that we could have a photo opportunity with or something and some remarks, but I didn't know if y'all wanted to try and do something that. Certainly don't want to do it in the middle of one of those intersections.
My thought would be maybe we could do something along with Juneteenth, because they'll probably do something this year, but that might fit with that week.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, we might be able to start at the corner of the park and start the walk there, you know, because they normally have a little walk if they're gonna do that this year. At the same time, you know, point out, because there should be a sign there, right?
Yep.
Maybe we could do something like that, that's my thought.
So are the signs already up?
All but one, yeah.
All but one.
Been going up the past couple of days.
I think it's, it's probably a good idea to also consult with just the MLK committee and see what they think, that we would like it for to be recognized and be part of that celebration process. I think it is, I, I think it's a really good idea, so, thank you.
Did they leave the profile signs up too? Picture, the head pictures that they, they took those down?
They took those down, yeah.
Yeah, they weren't very becoming, really.
Yeah.
I would just say that when the memorial signs were erected, for the next four or five years, there was a march on Seventeenth from Long's Park to the K-State Union. So I, I agree that we ought to check with the committee that proposed it. I think that makes perfect sense.
Okay, appreciate that feedback. If you take a look at the planning charts then, I think move to that next. So the next commission meeting on March 16th, several items for amending zonings and PUDs. All of those were passed at the planning board meeting last night, so those will be coming forward to you all. And then we do want to have, I know this says consideration of the ordinance establishing the housing advisory board, but we'd like to have another discussion with the commission. We're having some internal discussion about how best to proceed. You know, we really don't, right now, we had kind of looked at that having up to 15 board members at an, on an advisory board, which is a very large board, and so, and part of that, what was driving that was the workforce housing component. And so, one of the things that we had talked about, or at least mentioned, that it might be good in the event the sales tax question passed, was forming a task force to kind of really dive into the workforce housing issue and stipulate what some of those issues and recommendations might be relative to that, that would come back to this body as opposed to potentially making it part of a formal, a formal board. So we'd just like to have a further conversation. We've, we want, we'll provide you with some additional information with regard to that, kind of looking at what some of the other cities have done relative to this, and so we're, we're planning to keep it on the agenda, but we want to have some further dialogue with you all on, and get some, get some further direction on it.
So you want to talk, we want to talk at a work session prior to the 16th?
No, we're, we're just turning that into a discussion item.
You're gonna turn it into a discussion item?
Instead of an action item.
Okay, alright.
And then several final plats that night. One of those are related to Metal Arc Hills, where there are also, you recall in the Metal Arc Hills amendment, they're creating a doctor's office that's segregated from the population down by the shopping center, and so they're also, and that whole Metal Arc tract was part of the original industrial revenue bond issuance, and so they want to remove that. My understanding is a different financing plan for that, and so they want to remove that from our IRB ordinance, and so that will be part of that, part of that action for consideration that night as well.
Probably that whole plot down there by the entrance?
That's my understanding, that, right.
Can you say that?
Say what?
There you go. We had your mic off, sorry.
Oh, maybe we had it off, right? Okay.
So then, depending on your actions tonight, relative to second consider, readings, consideration of the face covering, and then related to that would be whether or not to continue our temporary operations, such as our policies for taking online public comment, different aspects of how we're conducting meetings and those provisions. We're in that, we're in that resolution, and whether or not we want to continue those or not would be part of that discussion that evening as well.
Would the emergency declaration also be part of it then, or isn't it ongoing to the end of the year?
So, we don't have an emergency declaration.
We don't?
No.
Okay.
The city doesn't issue emergency declarations.
Does the state have it?
So the state expires, I believe, the end of March is when the state declaration is currently scheduled to expire.
And then they revisit, I guess?
Yeah.
Thank you.
I think the legislature was actually debating that today, because they're debating amendments to the emergency management statutes. I hadn't, hadn't heard what action they might have took. I think it was the, either the, was in the senate today was where the debate was occurring. And then we would have a resolution for you to consider the alcohol permission on the platforms that were approved. We also have a memorandum of understanding with the Corps of Engineers on our utility relocations for the levee construction, and also our next portion of our local match payment to them. The next item is that sale of real estate for biosolids. Recall, we purchased some substantial acreage to, for our biosolid farm expansion. Within that was a couple of residential tracts. One of those tracts, we think, could be easily converted for our productive use of. The other one has some grade separations, and there was a request by the family in as part of the sale that we would make a, a good faith effort to look at potentially selling back a piece of that, and so that's the, we've come to an agreement to sell that small residential tract back to one of the family members, and so that will be the item under consideration.
Ron, is there already a house on it or not?
On this particular one, I don't think there's a house. There are some storage sheds. There is another residential tract right next to it that there is a house on. We also have the meter replacement, capital improvement item. Obviously, this is a sole source, sole source purchase, and to stay with the same type of meters that we have, all of the specialty equipment to, to radio read and, and other components, software packages, so it's important we stay with that particular brand, and then the authority to finance lease purchase some of those components. Then jump into April 6th, we have, we are looking at potentially moving the Convention and Visitors Bureau corridor report off of that, because your March work sessions are pretty full, but there is a possibility that we had more openings in the legislative sessions than we did in the work session. So relative to that, we would also have a public hearing to vacate some right of way down on South Fourth Street. This is a right of way that's unimproved, and is adjacent to Manhattan Concrete there on the south side of Potawatomi Avenue. Consent wise, this would be dependent on some of your feedback that you might get from the park board on establishing some of our fee resolutions. Of course, we have an item on tonight's agenda relative to adjusting an ordinance to allow for more than just program fees, but other types of charges as well. And then there are some fees we do need to establish for the new facilities, for rental rates and some of those components, some of the scholarship programs that we have, so those are some, some, some of the things that would be part of that resolution. We anticipate having a recommendation for the engineer on call program. I know some of you are involved in that deliberation process and review process. You'll hear more about this next item at our next week's work session on the pedestrian crosswalks and perimeter improvements and, and the cycle track. And then we've got Grandmere Unit Two subdivision, so awarding a contract there for street, sanitary sewer, and water, and then a city/university agreement and the downtown farmer's market Looking at work sessions then, we've got on March 9th next week, a quick update on the strategic plan, public engagement process. Anticipate this, really, the presentation part of that to be about 15 minutes as an update, kind of where we're standing. Jared, I don't know if you want to add anything to that?
Yeah, it's really just to give you all an overview of how the public meetings are gonna go on the week of March 22nd. We went out with our news release last week in a special edition insider, driving people to the website, engagemhk.org/crossroads, so that people can read about the process, take the survey that's on there now, as well as folks can register for one of the four virtual meeting dates that week. But really, that meeting, Sarah and Jamie are just gonna be there to kind of give an overview of how those four virtual meetings are gonna go, the questions that they're gonna be asking, kind of the intent behind the questions, to get that in front of you and any feedback that you have. But it should be a quick update. We plan to then come back on one of these April meetings, I think we have on the planning chart, and that'll be a really longer discussion about the results of those public meetings and the feedback that we heard from the community.
And most of that night, we want to focus on, we have, I think Jason told me, eight concepts for North Manhattan Avenue relative to parking and different delineations along there, as well as some important discussion on our parking management philosophy. So fees, fines, hours, not just in the garage, but in the district, and all of those aspects. So our parking consultant will be helping us with that. In March, Rob will give a pavement management and program update from the Point Two sales tax component. And then April 13th, we've got some water and sugar, water and sanitary sewer regulatory considerations. These are mainly some issues that we've had some more federal rules that are starting to impact us and needing to modernize some of our, some of our issues, so want some feedback from the commission on that before we bring it forward for implementation. And then a pretty, pretty significant discussion that night on a strategic plan update and relative to the public engagement results, right? And then more strategic planning, and actually on April 1st, which is your legislative meeting, we are, or excuse me, April 20th, not April 1st, April 20th legislative meeting, we want to start, we, we would have a discussion session on reviewing the first three chapters of the UDO, now called the Manhattan Development Code. It's taken me a while to make that transformation, I'm sure it will you too. And then Article Four here would be another one, and so starting to schedule those either on light legislative meeting agendas where we can work them, and the planning board's also starting to review them, and then also an additional work sessions as we move forward. So, any questions?
What's the plan for, is there a plan for a March 30th meeting? There's no meeting?
As of right now, it's a fifth Tuesday, and we're not planning one.
No meeting, okay. Okay, good. We have a two-week break, huh? For you too.
Yeah. Let's see, what else? Had some additional handouts for you. Legislative update, there really wasn't a lot last Friday, but just a couple of notes that I wrote down from the league briefing that they held via their Facebook Live, and I think those are typically Fridays at 2:00 that just about anybody can tune into, and they send out a link about 15 minutes before the meeting. But Senate Bill 250, this was on a public hearing on emergency management disasters, moving to the senate floor this week, and that's the debate and discussion they were having today. It looked like the, some of the main aspects were, is they were kind of keeping a traditional emergency management statute, dealing with all other natural disasters and emergency types, and then there was a pandemic statute, so that there could be different procedures for either one. It'll be interesting to see how that moves forward. House Bill 2078, which is a speedy trial provision that's helped move things through during COVID, has been suspended until 2024, and I think most of the prosecutors and defend, defense attorneys were in support of that. The Senate Bill 206, which was the eminent domain, will probably have a hearing sometime this month, is, is, but nothing's been scheduled as of yet that I'm aware of. And then the only comment they made on Senate Bill 13, remember, that's the one that's gonna do away with the tax lid and replace it with a different notice procedure for if you increase your budget $1. The terms that the league staff used was, it looks like the, the House wants something from the senate, and holding it legislative hostage to move it forward, so significant negotiations apparently between those two versions in the House and the senate. So it is turnaround time at the legislature, so there's some, expected to be quite a bit of floor action this week on various bills, but more to come on that one.
It's my understanding they're going to be out of session for quite a while here?
Yeah, I think they've got their mid, mid-session break, I think till...
Well, it used to be just a week or two, and this is gonna be like, after the first week of March, clear till May 5th, or so, it's like two months. Anyway, okay, seems like a long time.
Just some reminders, there's a MRC luncheon tomorrow. Some of you are planning to maybe attend that. City-county-county meeting, it would be our turn to host, if you have some items for that. I don't know if you, I don't think we have any carryover items, do we? So we're looking for items for that. If you'll have something that you want to discuss, that would be on the 18th, and then Intergov on the 22nd, and just wanted to, some of you I know are interested potentially in tuning in to the ITGA conference, which is May 24th and 26th being held virtually. So if you're, want more information on that, just contact Jared in the manager's office.
I have expressed interest in the past in participating in that, but I don't think I'm registered. At least I haven't gotten anything, and it may be just, you know, it's pretty early. I'm not, just to say, don't forget me. Get the cheapest rate you can.
Okay. That's all I had.
Same here, thank you.
I think it's a three-day Zoom, or three half-days, so it'll be, at least we won't be traveling.
That's all I have, Mayor, thank you.
Just continuing around with the staff and give us what, what we need to know.
Only thing I have is I had a good conversation last Friday with Cox about the audio issues, and for $2,500, we can upgrade our ancient system that Cox set up maybe over a decade or plus ago to fix the audio issue, but it will only do that. It will fix the audio issue, it'll still broadcast in standard definition. Cox has to, because it's a peg channel, a government access channel, broadcast in the lowest level, so we won't be able to get the HD output that we're seeing on the website and Facebook, but it will fix the audio issue. So we've asked them to move forward with that, so folks can start hearing better on Channel 3. So I'll let you know when that update occurs. That's all I have.
Jared, how is the survey coming, the strategic plan survey that you've pushed out for Crossroads MHK? What does it look like? Are we getting enough?
Yeah, I was looking at the results today on our website. We've had, we've reached about 1,000 people with just that one push to, from the insider, and we've had a little bit over 80 survey responses. We've had almost 500 people visit the page and read through and click some stuff. I don't have numbers on registration yet, but we're working. We, we have our community project committee meeting on Thursday, this Thursday at 6:00 PM, that'll be broadcast, and that's when we're handing out all of our publicity toolkit items and materials, flyers, all those packages that folks can send out to the people that they know. We're also gonna get that to you all, the city commission, so you can send that information out to all of your constituents, and I'm working with Vivian right now, and we're getting a big social media campaign over the next three weeks, as well as looking at radio content and other ad content that we can reach as many people as possible.
So with that, one of the things we realized is even with the vaccination things and going online and doing it, that a lot of people still may not have access to internet, or they may be homebound, or they may not know, have the knowledge to do a survey on it. Can we, are we thinking about doing anything via phone, using the community steering committee that you have in place and giving those tools, maybe to make some phone calls to people that may not have internet access, just to make sure we're not getting the same old folks who have all their needs met, and now they're looking for something extra as opposed to an actual needs?
Yeah, so we're, we're planning on doing that simultaneously during the week of the virtual round of engagement with our meeting in a box approach, which is gonna allow our community outreach committee to go to individuals where they're at and ask similar, very similar questions to what's gonna be asked at the virtual public meetings, so that we can reach people in that way, and then collect all those inputs and gather that information back. So part of the task and homework that our community outreach committee has been working on this last month is collecting their personal outreach commitment, which is the five to 10 organizations, hard-to-reach groups, that they can go reach out to, possibly in person, who don't have access to internet, and ask them those questions, and really take that virtual meeting that they may not be able to attend, or may not know about, because they don't have access to those communication channels, and take that meeting to them and ask them those same questions, so we can gather that input. So that'll be a, a big charge that we'll be working with. We're also gonna set up some times that, you know, we have those four times throughout the week where the meetings are actually occurring. We have that communication out there that if an individual doesn't have the technology but wants to attend one of those virtual meetings, they can come to City Hall, or they can come to the library and watch the meeting, and we'll have someone there with the materials that are going on to ask the same questions, so that they can participate.
Sounds good, thank you.
All right, commissioner ready?
Thank you. Thank you. I do appreciate the legislative update. I think some of the, our legislators have, have been sending out newsletters, and some of them have pretty detailed information, so I highly suggest everybody looking at what's going on in Topeka. And also, I don't know if the chamber has fixed any dates, but if they're off session or in their communities, back in their communities, I, I hope there is something coming up where we can have those conversations again, being March. There's still, like you said, things are gonna get done rather quickly and have lengthy conversations. For some reason, my link wasn't working for the Zoom meeting, for the city-county-county meeting, but I was able to do it via phone, even though nobody could hear me when I'm speak, when I was speaking. But one of the things I found interesting was the Kitchen Restore basic starter. We often think about Farm and Farm, Food and Farm Council, just for food, or Food and Security, but we don't realize that a lot of people may not even have the tools to cook food, and some of these things are quite costly. So if you have anything you're donating, or you're buying a new cooking set and you don't need your old one, I, it would be a good idea to contact either Common Table or Vicky James or Kitchen Restore and figure out where you can donate those items. We did have an ITGA meeting, and we had COVID updates from Linda Cook and Derek Jackson. Now, we discussed the housing advisory board and the need to have one or two students, and knowing that it's a two- to three-year term, Lane their SGA, I can't think of his last name right now. We discussed how to get a student on there, because students have such a short term in their college career, but trying to make sure we have representation from the student body as well. Updated them about the Diversity Equity Task Force. Lane, also from SGA, mentioned that he had, they had $3,000, $3,000 funds received to work on the Safe Bar Program, and they're working on a plan. And this is something we've been working on for a few years, and it came out of one of the, some of the sessions at ITGA, so it'll be good to see that become a reality at some point. The community meeting with K-State, we have every Monday at 1:30. K-State will still be following all their protocols and restrictions for sports, capacity, everything that they still have in place till the end of the academic year, and there was a conversation about just having boosters till Friday this week, and that there may not be vaccinations. So that was... Um, so that was a interesting conversation. And then I joined a different subcommittee meeting called JEA. It's the Justice Involved in Youth and Adolescent. And there was talk about the Stepping Up Program. And when, um, Ben Wilson was on the county commission, he had adopted, uh, signed on to the resolution for, um, a strong advocate for stepping up program, having to do with, uh, mental health, uh, in our community. But I don't know what happened since then. And I think I brought it up before. So I'll talk to the county commissioners and see if they would like to revisit that. Now they have, um, a person, a staff member working on this specifically. So it would really be good to have some of those peer leadership programs, increase the voices of, um, corrections, jails, and making sure we're building that bridge for mental health in all of those areas. There was a lot of notes, a lot of conversations. Um, but Bill Persinger from Topeka, he's also on this committee. And, uh, there's a lot of needs, uh, and lots of great ideas and platforms going on. But mainly, um, finding licensed people is becoming a challenge in mental health at all levels. And to just, uh, keep that on your radar, if you're looking for, uh, getting out of high school, looking for some kind of degree, the healthcare profession, especially the mental healthcare profession, there's a huge need there. So it'd be great if, um, people sign on to that. Um, and, uh, they said the state has, you know, the nine hundred million dollars that's been given out to states, that the state will be allotted funds and they're going to allot funds to counties uh, that they will share as well. I don't know what that means for Riley County, but I wanted to know if, uh, if Ron, if you have an idea what that means, that they're going to allot a certain amount to county. There isn't a formula per se that he dove into, but he just said the state's going to allot it to counties. And I don't know what that means.
I'm sorry, I am not familiar with that. So, cause you know, the last thing I had heard was, uh, there was quite a bit of discretionary money going to the states and the state had, uh, some flexibility to determine how they were going to use it, whether they were going to use it, uh, internally for state agencies uh, or how they used it similarly for Spark. Uh, you know, the only thing I have seen a little bit of is where they have targeted, uh, some of those funds for like rental assistance. That was a huge dollar amount through the Kansas Housing Resource Corporation. Uh, KDOT got a pretty big boost, uh, to be able to not only use themselves, but they've upped uh, some of the dollar amounts that are available for, uh, city and county, uh, revenue sharing as well as, uh, some of those grant programs that we apply for. Some, actually, some of the grant programs that are on the agenda tonight uh, got increased. A whole new category was assigned, uh, for example, on the, uh, like the Fort Riley Boulevard project where we used to call them, uh, the shared fifty-fifty. So they've, uh, put more, more money into some of those pots. But in general, uh, I have not heard about how they were, that there was a plan to distribute, uh, to counties or other government entities. So I, I will certainly look into that.
Maybe he was speaking specifically to mental health. I'm not sure. That could be the case. Uh, but when he said that, my eyes, ears perked up because I wanted to make sure we were in the loop for that. Um, things just move so fast or so slow, but the information is not getting out to everybody in the same manner. So I just want us to keep that on our radar. Um, let me see. I think, I think that's about it for my updates. Um, I, I do want to hear more about vaccines though. I don't know if you know more about that. Um, so they said, we can't move on to phase three. We're going to be in, staying at phase two. Variety of reasons why, but mainly, what does that mean as far as vaccines for our community? And I emailed Julie Gibbs back and forth. She's not sure we're going to have any more vaccines till the end of the month, but that sounds bad.
So as, as you know, they were preparing to move to phase three, uh, which would be eighteen to sixty-four, focusing, I think they had identified sixteen hundred, sixteen hundred individuals that had, uh, health conditions uh, of some sort that were more vulnerable than others. And that's where they wanted to start. Uh, the state protocols, uh, basically doesn't, uh, suggest that you go below sixty-five unless those folks are, uh, critical workers. Now, their, their definition of a critical worker is pretty long uh, from a, from that standpoint. So grocery workers, retail workers, factory workers, uh, it's, it's pretty extensive. Just kind of, if you remember back when we were, who can stay open and who has to close type stuff, you know, if you're, uh, you have critical workers, you can stay open. If not, you, you can't open. So that's where the discussion has occurred about, uh, uh, that phase. And, and we have met some of that criteria. Teachers, uh, health workers, our, our critical infrastructure workers, fire, EMS, all of those have, uh, been vaccinated, but we haven't done, uh, the full gamut of the, you know, retail or, or line workers or grocery workers and that sort of thing. So and, and they, they, you know, which, which one is a restaurant in? Is a restaurant in a hospitality, which is later phase or? So those are some of those confusing issues. Now, my understanding is, is we can certainly identify a lot of those people in phase two that, that are on the state's list. Um, and that's kind of my plan is, is, or my understanding is, is our plan is to kind of switch to that, uh, before the state's willing to let others. I think they're looking at, uh, other counties being ready to move to phase three. And, and, cause they want to supply vaccine to counties that are still in phase two.
So I'm, I guess I'm getting mixed messages. I'm hearing you say, we still have people in phase two that need the vaccine. So we are not ready to move out to phase three. But then I'm getting this other message is, we are done with phase two. We are ready for phase three, but that's why they're not giving us vaccines because there's other counties that need to finish phase two.
Yep. My, so the original plan was to move to phase three. The county said, we, we're not, we don't like that plan. And so we had to re, we submitted a new plan, uh, that was still going to try and let us go to phase three, but I think they, I have not approved that as well. There may be another one pending, but my understanding is, is they're, they're developing a plan to stay within phase two, cause there's still a lot of, by the states, the, the state wanted everybody to follow their provision. Now, and I would argue that, you know, in our county, our demographics are a lot different than most counties in Kansas. And so we've worked through that. We've been efficient in getting the vaccines out. We've got probably more institutions than your typical county has that, and mechanisms and people, uh, to be able to do that. Uh, so uh, I, I think, uh, if they're able to get additional vaccine with the state understanding that they're going to stay in phase two for these critical workers, uh, I think we'll be back in business. I haven't heard the results of that yet. But I think that's what they're trying to, because they don't want to stop vaccine. You know, if we can get the vaccines, we want it, we want to get it.
And that's, that's what I'm saying. So this week we won't have any. And we don't know if we're going to get some next week, is what I'm hearing.
My understanding is we would get vaccines for people who needed second shots.
Yeah, for the booster. They're doing that this week till Friday.
Right.
But I'm talking about the actual.
We haven't heard whether we're getting any new ones.
Yeah, that's what I, okay. Thank you.
Yep.
As Ron mentioned earlier, the, um, that large dollar amount for housing assistance, I think is coming on, online. It's a hundred and eighty million for the state of Kansas, twenty million Wichita went to twenty or got twenty million that they've already started rolling out their program. Um, so in the next week or so, that should go online through the Kansas Housing Resource Corporation. Um, and I believe it is intended to, the, cover, uh, up to twelve months of rent. So that's forward or backward unless they change those between now and the, the online portion that rolls out next week. But that's, we had a, uh, a hundred and eighty million dollars is a lot for any, uh, rental assistance program. But the, uh, I guess I had a ATA, I have, we, we have ATA, Flint Hills ATA meeting tomorrow. Um, and so I don't have much to update on you for that. Um, but we did have an NPO meeting, uh, a couple of weeks ago. And then that, the Junction City talked a lot about their main street. Um, they got their main street grant and some other, uh, just reorganization at the NPO. But, uh, things are, are, uh, as Ron mentioned, there's, there's a surplus of funds into projects right now. So people are getting a lot of that flow down from the original, um, carriers money that came out that's funding infrastructure projects that is impacting, um, the NPO. But that's all I got.
So on that, uh, on the housing money, is, is the rental assistance going to have to be people that were negatively affected by COVID? Or is it anybody, is based on income? How are they going to determine who's eligible for that hundred and eighty million dollars?
So I'm not going to speak with authority on the, uh, but I do know it has to have a COVID connection. So they have to be negatively impacted, um, either for what, same, same type of scenario. It has to be connected to COVID. Loss of income, um, has caused them to get behind on rent or potentially in the future, or to secure housing if they're out of it now. Um, the other requirements, there are, it, it's, it's different in Wichita. Wichita can do theirs, but, uh, they haven't really, uh, rolled out the exact, unless you've heard, um, threshold of income meet, like the, the means testing, I guess, to acquire it. It's intended to be pretty broad, cause that's, it's going to be hard to get through all that funding.
Yeah, uh, the, the only thing I've heard is that, uh, KFRC administered the Sparks rounds uh, that were involved. And so they've been through it, uh, and they, they're going to continue where the, there, there has to be a, a joint application, uh, from the renter and the landlord. Uh, and so the money would go to the landlord. But I haven't seen a lot on, you know, last, the Spark money had mortgages. Uh, it had utility assistance as well. And I haven't seen a lot about that aspect. So I suspect there'll be some additional information in, in those other components as well.
I, I, I had a couple of tenants that were successful in using that thing because they both lost their jobs because of COVID shutdown. And so they're both working different jobs now. And I don't know if they're making as much as they did before. Um, but I was just curious as to if, and that will all be handled by the state. We're not going to, the city of counties aren't going to get any. It's all.
I, I will note that there's a distinction in those two. The KEEP program, as we remember, was an eviction protection program. This is a rental assistance program, so it's called KIRA. And so if you, what they decide, if you've gotten so much in KEEP or how that works. But the way it was written at the federal level was up to fifteen months with very few restrictions.
I don't really have anything else.
There, try it again. When will the engineer on-call meeting be held? I received the submissions tonight, so I need to get busy, but I don't have a date on my calendar. We haven't set it? Okay.
Haven't set it yet.
That's good. I'm not, I want, no pressure, right? Okay. And, uh, uh, I've, I, I've seen a couple of articles, uh, about, um, hacks that have taken place at water treatment plants and wastewater treatment plants. Is that something that our city is concerned about or taking measures to, um, keep from happening?
I know we did some, uh, network protections in both, uh, upgrades, especially at the water plant. Um, and we have protection protocols in place, so.
Yes, okay. Good.
I'm, uh, we're not overly concerned about it. Now, obviously, you know, the folks that are doing that are finding new tricks every day. So it's, it's, it's something we need to certainly, uh, keep abreast of.
No, I'm glad that you're, um, that we're taking steps. That's important. Um, I wanted to, uh, mention the, um, that at the last meeting, we got a packet of material from a bed and, a bed and breakfast owner raising some questions about, um, uh, being, that all of the Bs and B and Bs are treated alike. And we know that supposedly only two of them are being inspected. And, um, uh, uh, calling our attention to just the unequalness of it. Plus, uh, and Winn and I talked just very, ever so briefly, uh, after, uh, sometime last week at the meeting about, um, the transient, charging the transient guest tax for overnight stays at like Airbnb's or, or, but B and Bs, two of the, these two B and Bs or three are charging that, uh, money. And so the others aren't. And some of them, we may not even know, because they aren't technically a B and B and don't have a license. They could just set up shop in a ha- big old house and to rent out bedrooms. And so I would be interested in moving that forward in some way. We've, I mean, I, I know I've brought it up year after year, but I, I, there's never been any movement. And I think there's, it's time for that. Um, so.
We do have an internal committee that, uh, is, has been working on it.
Okay.
And they are also, uh, uh, being addressed in the UDO updates, uh, as well as part of that, those regulations updating. So uh, but specifically, I know, uh, staff has had, uh, conversations, uh, with the gentleman who wrote the, the letter and, and are in conversation with them and, and anticipate that, uh, that internal group will be bringing forth, uh, recommendations for changes that we need to make to at least level the playing fear field. Some of those things, uh, are, will be somewhat beyond our control, but, uh, others, if we want to collect things, will likely require us to license things. So uh, those are, and, and certainly, uh, uh, we can bring those issues forward and, and we're planning to do so.
Well, it's clear that what applies to one doesn't always apply to the other. And, um, there aren't many here, but it would seem important to get them together so that they, the bed and breakfasts are considered a group. And then the Airbnb is also considered in, in some other ways that, because they tend not to declare and not to come forth and get licenses and do the, the kind of things that B and Bs do across the country. It's a whole different, uh, mindset, I think.
Yeah, there's several issues there from a code provision, from a land use provision, uh, as well as we don't collect that revenue, but we, there's some things we can do to help ensure that revenue gets collected.
I've toured a couple of them. They're very nice. And I, I just think they should be, uh, respected for doing the right things uh, and not just, uh, blown up. Um, I wanted to bring to your attention too, I know there isn't much time, but the Flint Hills Regional Council has, uh, been facilitating an application, at least last week, uh, for, to the National Park Service. To, um, it, and this, this proposal or has to do specifically with rivers, trails and conservation assistance. Uh, and I'm, I've asked, Ron and I talked and, and he's going to put a copy of the application in the mail folder. So you can actually, and, and the, this application. But it is, um, for the, uh, to develop a regional river trail concept plan as the first step in identifying what opportunities may exist in each community along the Kansas River. And we're talking about from Junction City to Wameko. And that's a long expanse of river. So, and it's not something that's going to happen overnight. It's just to get the different communities to begin thinking about what can we do? What can, what is possible? So that someday there could be, uh, more, uh, you know, I, I've really enjoyed the, um, the, the, uh, river area at Council Grove. Uh, down, uh, along the river and under the bridge. And that's a wonderful area. I don't know that we could ever have anything that sophisticated on such a long expanse. But it is something for us as, as communities to begin to think about. And there is an initiative here uh, to, um, develop a riverfront, uh, project. And I think it's, it's, it's in. in the beginning stages and very conceptual, but this is a good fit with that. So together, we might actually develop something in the future, and so, just so you would know about it and be familiar with it as you hear, uh, over the years, cause it will take years for this to happen as it comes up, so I think that's all I have.
Okay, and then for tonight's meeting, we, we still need to decide on the RFP, you know, we need commissioners to volunteer to serve on the selection committee. Of course, I'm interested in being on that. We may all be, I don't know.
I'm interested. I'm.
I'm interested in serving up.
On, on that one? And you are too, Mark?
For which one?
I think, I think we probably don't want more than two, so.
Which one?
That's the RFP on Aggieville.
On Aggieville, okay.
But we're not, we're not anywhere close to really needing the committee yet, cause we're.
Not yet.
Not, yeah, cause we, we're just gonna vote to even send out the RFP tonight.
Correct.
Okay, so we've got a little time, but.
Correct, and then, and then we'll, you know, whoever, when the RFPs come in, then I guess Commissioner Reddy and Haddasaw, you can be the two representatives, cause we don't need three or four more. Then we'll have a quorum, and that won't work well, so. Okay, so we'll just do that. Commissioner Reddy and Haddasaw can handle that for us.
Let me say, I was on the Aggieville, Aggieville Vision, uh, Committee, and so that, I have a good, so I, I don't have to be on this one, so thanks for making sure.
Yeah, we were, we both served on that one, and that was, that was interesting, but.
Yeah, it was.
I think, I think that's good. And then I just have one last item. I've been, I've been talking for a while on trying to change the charter ordinance for the, uh, library, just to put the employee benefit fund under the six mils, cause I think it would be helpful in budgeting, and I'd like to put that on the agenda, but it's really not worth doing unless four of you agree, because, uh, it takes four votes to change a charter ordinance. So I'm just interested in some feedback on that. I don't wanna waste staff's time, cause they don't need to work on it if, if we don't have a predominance of people that understand, and it'd be a very simple action. It would just be the matter of right now, the charter ordinance allows the employee benefit fund to be outside the six mils, which means sometimes in the future, it could be possible that the library would cost us more than six mils. Now, that has not happened in the past, because they've always kept, kept it within six mils to include the employee benefit fund, but there's no requirement for them to do that, and the library director's fixing to retire. We're gonna end up with a new one, and so I wanted to, this would be a good time to just set those parameters so that the budget is like that. I don't think it'll cause them a problem, because the money they invested in the expansion of library, that, that bond will be paid off, and so I think it's very easy to absorb this, but it, it also, uh, helps us with that, uh, consistency in budgeting.
I, I've served on the, um, library board a few times, and I think it's one of the best advisory boards, and they have a really good, uh, well-attended, uh, financial support, and the discussions they have around financial issues and matters and the impact on the city are very thorough, and, um, I don't see a reason to assume something bad's gonna happen. I think it's one of the best-run organizations we have in our community. I, I'm not in favor of changing what we have in place right now.
I am probably not in favor, but I would like to talk to them some more, you know, I, the last time this, actually, I think the only time this came up before was before I was on the commission, with, this was something that we had to answer at a forum or something. I did some research about it, and the research I did then, uh, was, uh, pretty much against doing that, but I'd like to have some more time to, to revisit.
We're down to just three anyway, so, um, I would be interested in trying to, since they're falling underneath the six as a combo anyway, there's no reason we probably couldn't cap it, especially if they're gonna have some budget freedom coming up with some loans paid off or something, so I'd, I'd be willing to.
Uh, I agree that it is well-run. I don't think there's a problem, and I don't, there's no, uh, if there's no problem, there's no reason to have to, uh, put anything in place to control. They've been controlling themselves, and so, I mean, and not, uh, it, it looks to me like something in search of a problem, and there isn't one.
Well, that, that's a true statement, it's like a lot of other things that we do, but, uh, and I do agree, the library's done a good job, but I, I think I made a point the past ten years in making this an issue every, every budget cycle to be sure that the employee benefit fund is in there, and they have kept it under, uh, six mils, so. So that's, that's the feedback I needed, so Ron, I wouldn't pursue that, cause I don't think it's probably worth it at this time. Okay, so on that note, I think we can take about a break for five minutes before the legislative session starts.
Can you turn your emoti, can you turn your video off, Rick? And when, when your item's up, I'll have you turn it back on. You should be able to hear us as we move forward, and when we get to that item, I'll have you turn your video on. I think I can stop it, so I'm gonna stop it. Your video will, will stop here in the room, and we'll turn you on when your item's up. Okay, all right.
Yeah, I think I can hop over and turn him back on. Yeah, I think you have to ask him, but yeah. Yep.
All right, welcome to the Manhattan City Commission meeting for Tuesday, March the second, twenty twenty-one. Now, please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, as this is the first meeting of the month, we have, uh, open comments. We accepted public comment in writing prior to tonight's meeting, and any comments submitted were given to all members of the City Commission. Uh, we are also allowing public comment for those attending the meeting in person tonight. Each public comment should comply with our public comment rules. Each speaker has five minutes, and please clearly state your name and address for the record. So is there anyone that has a public comment on any of the topics not on the agenda tonight? Feel free, come, come on up and state your name and address, and limit, uh, your time to five minutes.
Hi there, my name is Mike Vanilla, and my address is eight twenty-nine Dehoff, here in Manhattan. Uh, I'm here to talk tonight about the mask mandate and extending it.
But, but that is on the agenda tonight, so you'll have to speak later on that one.
Oh, I'm sorry.
This is just public comment on anything not on the agenda tonight.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We'll get to that in a minute, and we'll.
Okay, thank you.
You can come back up and go then, thank you. Okay, anybody have any comments on something that is not related to the agenda tonight? Okay, seeing none, then we'll, we'll move on to commissioner comments.
Yes, um, I have, I'm on the, um, the Manhattan branch of AAUW. AAUW is the American Association of University Women, and this is when, um, it pertains to a lot of, uh, educational matters, uh, gender equity and such, but this month in March, uh, we invite all of you to join International Women's Day at seven PM via Zoom on March eighth. A panel of women with origins outside the US but who live in Manhattan will share unique perspectives and personal experiences intended to increase our individual understanding and appreciation of the diversity in our local community. Uh, please feel free to email us at Manhattan, uh, k s A A U W at gmail dot com to obtain a Zoom link. International Women's Day is a global day, recognizing and honoring the social, economic, cultural, and political achievements of women. This year's theme is choose to challenge, uh, find your voice to challenge stereotypes and take action to accelerate gender equality. Event speakers are Nilofar Fahadi, doctorate candidate and research assistant in chemical engineering from Iran, Sedona McKenzie from Jamaica, a Jamaican native and doctorate candidate in economics, Laura Balazera, Balazerko, a native of Argentina, local businesswoman and executive designer of Victorianana Gips, and Rose Ningwada, uh, former exports control compliance officer in the Office of Vice President for Research, now with Emory University and a native of Kenya. AAUW recognizes Sunflower Proofing and some of the sponsors that we have. Uh, I do wanna mention, this is our sixth year doing this, and we have a lot of international communities in the city of Manhattan, and it's always wonderful, uh, the panelists that we have, the caliber of candidates that we have to speak to issues of their country and then share their culture and traditions with ours. So I strongly urge you to, um, tap into AAUW and attend, um, the Zoom meeting, the panelists. We don't have a dinner or a breakfast, so you don't have to pay anything, it's free, and, uh, let's celebrate together on March eighth. Thank you.
Linda?
I serve, uh, represent the Manhattan City Commission on the Flint Hills Regional Council, um, and it's a, a very active group involved in, oh, four at least, federal grants to do projects in the seven-county Flint Hills region. And the most recent thing they're doing is an application to the National Park Service for, uh, rivers, trails, and conservation assistance. And so, uh, Kristi Rodriguez, the executive director, has submitted an application, and all of the jurisdictions in these seven counties, all the cities, counties, and some other groups have, uh, coalesced to, uh, support this application. They've all written letters of, letters of support. They envision, uh, some kind of river development from Junction City, Kansas, on the Kansas River, from Junction City to Waimego, and it really is a nice fit with a vision that some of the folks in Manhattan have for a riverfront development here. None of this is anytime soon, cause there's no money, but it is, uh, a vision, and it's a goal, and so it's important that we set those goals so that we can work toward them as, as time goes on. So just to let you know that that's been submitted. Thank you.
Okay, and just, just one comment for, uh, those of you out there interested in volunteering, getting involved in some of the, uh, city, you know, boards and committees. We've got quite a number of them. You can go to the city website, and you'll, you'll see a form there that you can fill out to apply, and, uh, while some are not, don't have vacancies right now, there's always surprise vacancies. Folks move or, uh, resign in the middle of a term, and, and it's always a challenge. And I know Mayor Reddy had fun trying to keep those filled. It's like, you know, every week you're, you're struggling, trying to call people to say, hey, and right now, we, we do have a problem with the Manhattan Housing Authority Board of Commissioners. There's two vacancies there. We had a resignation and, 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 and so we need to get those filled, because that's very important, because we've got several buildings here, and, and, uh, I know if you saw in the paper, I guess Commissioner Estabrook is gonna be running that organization, so he's not putting in a plug for it. I am, but that, that board is critical to that operation, so if there's anyone out there that wants to get involved in that, uh, it's the second link on the city website, and that's gonna be a board that's gonna require a lot of effort, so you're gonna need a little bit of time to work on that one, I think. It's not gonna be an easy one. I think you also serve on that.
I would say.
Do you have anything to add?
Just that it is, it really takes a commitment. There are actually, the two positions that are open, one is for a public housing or section eight tenant, and the other is, uh, for some, a member of the community. And, uh, so the Housing Authority is sending out a message to all of the tenants, inviting someone to come forward and make application. So, but yes, please, uh, uh, we re, so much of the Housing Authority, um, uh, work, uh, is, is associated with the housing and, US Housing and Urban Development, HUD, and, um, they're pretty rigid, so it's a matter of interpreting and trying to figure out what they want and getting them to tell you what they need, and so, but anyway, just to put that plug in for that. Thank you, Win.
Okay, so appreciate any support on, on the boards out there. Okay, we'll move on to item four, which is the consent agenda, and items on the consent agenda are those of routine and housekeeping nature, or those items which have previously been reviewed by the City Commission, and the commissioner may request an item be moved to the end of the general agenda. Do any of the commissioners have questions on that one?
Uh, Mayor, I want, I would like to, uh, remove, uh, item D, um, which is, uh, about parks and recreation fees, and move it to the, into the general agenda.
Okay, and which item number is that?
It's A, B, C, D.
D?
D, can't tell with a mask.
Yeah, there we go.
Uh huh.
Okay. Any, any other comments from commissioners? Okay, the public was allowed to submit public comments related to an item on the consent agenda through the city's website. One public comment regarding item H was received, but it really perturn, pertained more to the face mask ordinance at that time. Now, we can have in-person comments tonight. Again, state your name, address, limited to five minutes on any item on the consent agenda at this time. Okay, seeing none, then we'll close public comment on the consent agenda, and any other further discussion from the commission?
Mayor, I move, we, um, approve the consent agenda and move item D to the end of the general agenda.
Second.
Okay, City Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Mayor Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner Morse?
Yes.
Commissioner Haddasal?
Yes.
Commissioner Estabrook?
Yes.
Commissioner Reddy?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Okay, then we'll move on to the general agenda, and the first item on the general agenda is to consider a request from HCW regarding a loan payment for the Manhattan Conference Center due to COVID impacts. And I guess, Jason, you're going to take the lead on this one?
I will. Thank you, Mayor. And I know we do have Rick Huffman with HCW, Robert Allen with HCW, and I believe Brad Everett with the Hilton is also in the crowd. I saw him peeking in here, so I think he's out in the hallway. These gentlemen may have some comments for you as well. We received a request to rebate the $100,000 payment that was made earlier this year. They have been making this payment since 2012. It is in reaction to a 30-year agreement that we have with HCW to operate the conference center. So they pay the city roughly $100,000 originally for about 29 years, and then we had a balloon payment at 2.1 million. We restructured that when we expanded the conference center, added that 1.79 million in the new loan, giving us back a beginning loan balance of 5.9 million. So they've been paying, and obviously COVID very much impacted 2020 operations, and I'll allow the HCW team to get into that. Their request is essentially to rebate back the $100,000 that was made in January, and then add it to the end payment, the balloon payment in 2047. We have been open to, obviously, consideration this evening. If the Commission desires to move forward with this, the motion itself authorizes us to finalize that agreement, and the mayor and clerk to execute that agreement. We have not put that together yet. I don't think that's going to be a very difficult thing to do, but again, it's really, the lion's share of their letter really addressed a lot of their shortfalls and the impacts of COVID. We have relationships, obviously, with HCW in operation of our conference center. We have relationships with Manhattan Town Center and land that they occupy. Those are unique relationships that cities get into. And in these times, you often find yourselves being approached by those entities that are impacted greatly. This letter clearly identifies a lot of their struggles, and again, I'll let Rick and Robert and Brad expand upon those Commissioners. But if you have any questions for what it is city administration is seeking this evening?
Yeah, I had a thought here. You use the term rebate. That's a curious term. Are you, are we, are we giving them money back, and then they're going to pay us back in 30 years? Is that the plan?
Rebate is being used because they've actually made the payment.
Okay.
We've receipted the payment in January.
January 2021's payment?
Correct.
Okay, and they're just wanting us to give it back to them, and then they'll pay us back in the end of the loan payment?
Correct.
Okay, so there is money changing hands. We're giving it back to them so they can pay us later?
Yes.
And the memo, you know, states the city would end up, you know, being responsible with $100,000, but it doesn't really give us the source. And so I think it's important to maybe identify the source, because if it's going to cause property taxes to go up, that's probably not a good idea. We have CARES funds that, you know, we don't know what the end result of some of that's going to be with, you know, so that might be able to do it, or economic development funds, which makes it a little bit more easier to handle.
For this one-time expense, we would anticipate the bond and interest reserve could pick that up. There's a cash balance in the bond and interest reserve adequate enough to handle this. Now, that'll impact the next bond and interest budget for 2022 and how we look at that. So there are other sources you could go to, but for 2021, we could make this payment out of the bond and interest reserve cash balance, or we can look at other funding streams and economic development funds, or not a lot of other idle funds sitting there. But there are some balances, other places you could look to as well.
Yeah, we talked, you know, a couple of weeks ago about keeping these reserves up, so I just assume not mess with those reserves, and, you know, allow that cushion to be there if it's possible to get it from these other sources, and especially like it if we can get it from all that federal money that's sloshing around out there that we're not sure how we can spend.
So Jason, you know, the hospitality industry, it's been dramatically impacted. I'm surprised that, for the $100,000, that they didn't receive CARES funds or any kind of other stimulus money, because that is one industry that has been unable to have conferences, events across the board throughout the United States. So is it, is it they received some, but they need more from those stimulus monies, or is it they didn't receive any federal funds at all?
I can let Rick, let me bring him in here. Go ahead, Rick. We got you on.
Okay, thanks. Yes, thank you, council members. We did make the payment, as Jason said, in January. We did a capital call from our partners to put the money in, but our, we've been greatly impacted this last year. In fact, we just lost a few weeks ago a night-sized conference due to the pandemic. They went elsewhere. So we, our EBITDA for last year was 546,000, and that included, we did get 375,000 of PPP for employee payroll, and then we did receive a $20,000 grant from the state, 15,000 from Riley County, and 5,000 from Manhattan Chamber. Our, with our debt service on the property, our cash flow was negative $422,000 last year, and we had reserves that we pulled that money from and depleted them. And then this year so far, we've lost about $150,000 in the first two months of cash flow. So we're, and obviously, as you know, we opened up larger centers, so there's larger operating costs too on it, and it happened to be winter, unfortunately. But we're not seeing the travel business come back yet. We're hoping that with the vaccine and everything going on, that soon, maybe the state will start lifting, and the county will start lifting some of the requirements for travel, but the business travel has been pretty low. Leisure travel's been good. People do want to get out, we know that, but we're pretty far upside down, and the taxes on that property are over 550,000 a year. And the county did lower the taxes, we got word, by 30%, which will help. But the current value of the, based on the NOI at the hotel right now, current value of the hotel with the commensary and everything is worth about 2.2 million, based on an 8% capitalization rate. So it's a dire time, and we're just, we want to pay it back. The city's been a great partner in this whole project. We're excited about getting this over and getting back to work and getting people coming to Manhattan, working with the Chamber. But it's pretty trying times, and we could sure use, sure use the help.
So another question. Is it possible that we can reduce the, from being returned in 2047 to maybe 2027 or 20, like 10 years from now? I think that would at least be helpful to us to kind of replenish our own funds, since it's coming out of there. I don't know if that makes sense to do that.
From our perspective, we could clearly negotiate with them. If there's a timeframe the Commission's more comfortable with, we can bring those options to HCW, negotiate, and let you all know where those, where those end up.
And what I need to know from you, Jason, is the pros and cons of this. What are the benefits to the city? I understand from the business perspective. I also don't know what's going to happen to this $900 billion and the 1.9 trillion, and maybe we can use that as a payback system also, kind of like we did with our business districts.
It's why I touched on the relationships we have with groups like HCW and our Manhattan Town Center owners. A long time ago, we went into a partnership for both of these operations. They're unique. Municipalities across the country don't do this every day. We're lucky to have partners like HCW that have actually participated in the payment for the construction of conference facilities. Our neighbor, just directly to the west, financed theirs at 100%. The developer didn't put anything into it. We knew that going into the construction of this. We, I echo Rick's comments. It's been a good partnership, and we want to continue that. You look to some of the revenue streams we have received over the last year, the 2.9 million in Spark, CARES money we got at the airport. I mean, I don't think budgeting, the approach to budgeting should be hope, but if you do end up realizing more federal money, this could be an alternative to slide some of that into for this year.
All right, thank you.
Could we just highlight, because it hasn't been mentioned, I think it was in the packet, the Hilton's paying property tax. How much is that over here in relation to this $100,000?
And you got, I think he said he spends about $600,000 a year in property tax. Just for your information, it goes towards the TIF district, which is paying off another obligation of the city. And that'll go through 2026. So all his property taxes are being captured by the city right now. They're not being distributed to the school district or the county. They are coming to the city to help pay for that TIF bond.
And I think that's a significant point that I just wanted to highlight. Appreciate that.
Yep. Rick, is there, is there an openness to coming before 2047 with 2027?
Sure. Sure, there is. Yeah, once we get this over and we get back to normal operations, I'm sure, you know, we can talk about that, Jason, absolutely.
Okay.
I think that's a good move, because $100,000 in 15 years is not going to be what $100,000 is today, and there's no interest on this at all. So it makes sense for us to not wait to 2047 or whatever year out there that far. It's not something I really want to do. I really would like for, it seems to me that this is a good use of the CARES money, if, whatever you want to call it, because it is directly COVID-related. And if the, so, you know, I know there's a little paragraph here about the city will try to do that, but I think it's important that the city budget not be hit with it, if there's any alternative at all. And, you know, I've toyed with voting no, but I'll probably support it, I suppose.
We do have a balance in the industrial promotion fund. That's primarily been revenue we've received out of the tech park from sales of property. Like I said, there's some idle fund that we could look at, that if we didn't want to get to the general fund, if we wanted to stay away from that cash balance, we want to stay away from the bond and interest, we can come up with some scenarios to cover this.
I'd like to stay away from the bond and interest. I don't think that's a good reason for us to tap into that fund. And, you know, I think we will have some, I've been thinking there would be some economic development reason, that we would need those funds. And, you know, maybe that that isn't going to happen, and this is the best we can do with the money. So we need to figure that out.
Okay, I guess we can, if there's more Commissioner comments, we can take public comments on this particular topic, if there is any tonight. Okay, I guess no one is going to come forward for public comments, so turn that back to the Commission. And what I've heard so far is at least two Commissioners would like to, if we approve this, change the motion to say with a payment date end of 2027. Is that, is that what you suggested?
Either 2027 or 20, is it a decade? Is 2021, or 2031?
Okay, what?
Yeah, I think, I'm thinking a decade, 2031, and if it's not paid by then, maybe there would be interest on it or something of that type. I think 30 years out is far too long. So I would like to propose a decade.
If the Commission's agreeable, and this could be something to consider, we can bring that agreement back and place it on a consent agenda with some terms that we've negotiated for action. It's not imperative that it be approved tonight, or this motion even passes tonight, but if the general consensus is go work out something that's more in line with the comments you've made, we can bring that agreement back, or at least the amendment on a consent agenda in the future.
I think I'm comfortable with that. I'd rather not vote on it tonight and see a proposal, an actual proposal after negotiations.
I had a thought here. I've got no problem with this, granting them some space here to keep the operation going. My only thing was the, we've already, this will be the second change in the contract that we have, and I thoroughly expect within five years that we'll change the deal again. And so bring something to us, and we'll pass it and give them some abatement for this year, and then try to get it in the negotiation, try to get it paid within 10 years or something. And like you said, I think, I assume before COVID, they were easily making their payments, and it sounded like the facility was doing great. And so hopefully, within two or three years, they'll be profitable. It'll take a while to make up the money that they lost, but at least if, within 10 years or so, I would be totally happy with that. Because, yeah, we'll be back negotiating every seven years.
From HCW's perspective, we're good with paying it back in 10 years. I'm fine with that. Any help right now would be appreciated.
Okay, so what I'm hearing then is, you know, the Commission would like to have this brought back, and that, you know, maybe we could hit some financing where the money's going to come from, so that we don't mess with certain funds. So that would tempt, lend me to believe that perhaps we should make a motion to table this. Will that work, and then you can bring it back?
I move, we table the request for HCW regarding a loan payment of the Manhattan Conference Center due to COVID impacts.
Brenda, before they vote, does it have to be to a certain date, or can it be open-ended on the tabling? Do you recall? Okay, okay.
Yeah, my understanding is it is. It just stays tabled until we untable it.
Sounds good.
Second.
Okay, so City Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Thanks, Rick.
Commissioner Morse?
Yes.
Commissioner Haddasal?
Yes.
Commissioner Estabrook?
Yes.
Commissioner Reddy?
Yes.
Mayor Butler?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you.
Okay, then we'll move on now to item B, which is consider approving an request for proposals concerning the current city parking lot located in Aggieville at the northwest corner of 12th and Laramie Streets for possible redevelopment, and appoint Commissioners to serve on the selection committee. And during our coordination meeting, I think Commissioner Reddy and Commissioner Haddasal desired to be on that committee. So those would be the two that were appointed, should we pass this. And I guess, Jason, Deputy City Manager is going to continue with the presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioners? I did not share that last one. I will share this one. My apologies to those on Zoom. We have prepared a very lengthy request for proposals. This is dealing with the city's parking lot, generally at the corner of 12th Street and Laramie. This is a site that's basically about 100 parking stalls in our city parking lot. Aggieville, just a little bit of orientation, 12th Street, obviously where we've recently remodeled and redone a section of roadway. Obviously, Laramie is one of the southern side streets in Aggieville. Mainly Moro backs up, the building's back up to this site, fairly prominent city parking lot. We have created We have created a request for proposals that attempts to redevelop the site. So the intent here is to test the market and see if there's interest. This is something we would anticipate getting out by the end of this week if approved this evening. Proposals will then be due back May 7th. As you mentioned, a, a selection committee would be assembled to review those proposals. There are two phases to this particular RFP. A lot of the early documentation here is just really kind of a orientation to Aggieville and what we've been working on. The two phases that the development, the developers and the development team will go through fairly generic information in phase one, but they do have to try to address, address these primary objectives and secondary injectives of the RFP itself. There, there's a lot of information here, there's multiple objectives. A lot of them have to do with fitting within Aggieville, fitting within this district, not becoming something that doesn't fit or doesn't accommodate what's going on around it. There's a lot of public infrastructure all around this site, obviously a lot of businesses and different types of businesses on Moro. So we're looking for a multi-use, mixed-use type of development, integrating commercial office, possibly residential, but we were, we're also looking for an active ground floor to be pedestrian-friendly, potential retail restaurant service spaces. So as I mentioned, there's, there's several objectives. A lot of them have to do with the use of the site, how it fits in with the district. The secondary objectives, very much the same, looking for ways to take advantage of TIF, any opportunity zones, any type of innovation district components, looking for that diversity within the project itself, architecture being addressed and looked at. So there, there's a lot of objectives here that have been identified, some that have revert back to the 2016, 2017 Aggieville vision, incorporating these in this approach. Obviously, the parking garage going under construction, how will they utilize that? Integration of this building into the district. So as I mentioned, two phases. Phase one, we're looking for that transmittal letter with a lot of information really surrounding the developer and that team that they've assembled. Statement of qualifications, looking at their past history and all their experience. Again, that just, that development team, project concept, looking for ideas that obviously meet those objectives. And then any of the general housekeeping things that we normally do, looking for anything that would rule out a potential developer that wouldn't necessarily fit with this project. Once phase one is considered by the selection committee, we move into phase two, and that criteria is going to be more in line with specifics, with the tract itself, and, and we're going to look at site plans, architectural renderings, any type of milestones that are necessary. I think the milestone side of this conversation is very important. When we do select someone, we'll be back in front of the commission with a pre-development agreement. That agreement is going to set forth a timeline. And if that relationship doesn't keep up with the timeline, we need to act quickly. Our tip, our tax increment finance district is only in place for 20 years. We've got a full year under our belt. We got 19 left. This project itself, even if we got rolling here, probably only going to give us about 17 years of revenue. So we really need to keep the dominoes falling and, and progress being made. So what a developer tells us upfront, we've got to hold them to that. And that's really trying to be reiterated in this, that it will be tight and it will be managed in a way that we don't have time to sit here and let something develop for two, three years. And we're going to try to move it forward just as fast as we can. They're going to obviously do their own little market analysis and provide a forecast of that, look at their potential level of investment. Yeah, and just, just a variety. Then, then getting into the financial capability, this is going to get back into their own portfolio, how they're structured, where their revenues and resources come from and, and how viable they are. Commitment duration, again, just trying to get a feel for the capacity of that developer and their ability to deliver the product that they, they propose. We've had just some general conditions here, basically giving the city the right, really in discretion, to reject any or all submissions. There's no guarantee this is going to be done. This obviously has to meet the threshold of the commission. The selection committee will do its best to sift that out and bring back a recommendation that meets the objectives of the commission and of this RFP. We are trying to centralize comments and questions into our office to me directly. So if you as commissioners aren't comfortable and don't want to engage, you can absolutely send them to me. Our selection committee will start with me. If there are members of the committee that have a greater amount of knowledge on a certain question, I'll filter those, I'll assemble those, I'll get those out. We plan to hit several media outlets. We plan to direct message a lot of developers, not only locally, but those who have expressed or shown interest or built in the past in Manhattan, casting that net wide. My anecdotal to you, a couple more have contacted the CMO since we've talked about this last, out of town developers interested in what it is we're doing and how we're doing it. So I anticipate there'll be a reasonable amount here to, to sift through. Again, just kind of touching on that selection committee, we go ahead and evaluate, we identify the criteria, we identify the types of points that we'll assign as a committee member. You'll evaluate, you'll give a rank, we'll come together and hopefully have a consensus amongst the group to, to move forward with a recommended group to the commission. I would envision we would be back in front of you all probably late June or July. It may take us 30, 45 days to get through this and get through phase one and phase two, and then ultimately make a recommendation. We're clearly going to have them in for interviews eventually, but we'll narrow that list before we do so. That pretty much sums up where we'll be. I think this statement, which was prepped by Bill Frost, who has just decades of experience working with developers, A, B, C, and D here are, are fairly important. And it kind of goes back to what I said earlier, we're going to set the stage and expectations with this developer potentially. We'll want to be very specific in terms of that time period. Compensation, we were, we were provided money from developers way back in '03, '04, '05 when we worked with Dial. They came in and made a significant financial down payment with the city because we selected them and they wanted to let us know and we wanted them to be vested in the community. So six months in, it is a little harder just to walk out of town. And, and with that financial investment, we know they're, they're serious. So we'll more than likely have that as part of the agreement, too. Issues that need to be explored or addressed, we can identify in that agreement, and then we'll obviously look for other matters that need to be addressed there, too. But those pre-development agreements are typically maybe one to two pages. We get those in front of developer, we get them from, in front of the commission, and we start that relationship down the path. Just some specific instructions on submissions, and again, more information about Aggieville and the district. So with that, Commissioners, I'd be happy to answer any questions, entertain any modifications you may want within the RFP, but we are looking to get that approved this evening so we can proceed with that advertisement.
It looks, looks like a pretty extensive RFP, should cover everything. But I wanted to just do some bullet points and, and be sure that I, I understand this because we've gotten a number of emails, people concerned about it. And of course, this is going to be in accordance with the Aggieville strategic plan, it's got to meet that. I don't think construction based on the, the timeline would take place until the current garage is done.
Very true.
That we, we would also probably make it so that we don't lose any further parking, because that seems to be a big, big concern. And those would be the three, you know, big ingredients there. So we won't go backwards on parking. And then the great advantages of the city is, of course, the TIF. We can get maybe 17 years of TIF out of this, and it will put a piece of property that is not on the property tax rolls on the property tax rolls, whi- which helps us with our long-term budgeting, you know, for the city. Is that correct?
Absolutely. All those points are, are valid and correct. We anticipate the garage being done by February of '22. I think it's going to take us at least until then to really get to a point where we're comfortable with the design, willing to move forward with any type of construction plan, probably several months even after that. Probably, you know, looking at summer of '22 at the earliest, that's going to be somebody ready to hit the ground with a, you know, a pretty good preliminary design, pretty good pre-financing to get us to a point by next summer to start construction.
Okay, thank you. Before we open the public comments, are there any further commissioner comments?
I have a couple of questions. I specifically wanted to know more about the current parking garage. I'm not willing to put that small area of the community under such stress by having two big projects at one time. And certainly losing parking. I think we're at a point where we cannot lose any more parking in Aggieville or our businesses will just dry up, that we just can't. And I'm interested in some of those remedies and parking management kinds of solutions that you have, and I think that's coming up, you mentioned in another meeting. But this is really fast. From, because when you first started talking to us about an RFP, it was more of, we just want to go out and test the waters, see what's out there. And now we're actually on a path that within 15 months or something, we'll be starting, somebody will be starting construction. And I, I guess the question I have is what are the, and, and I know you don't know what the project is yet, but I'm really interested in the estimate for the amount of infrastructure that it's going to take to support this project. What's it going to cost us in stormwater, wastewater and, and water to? I mean, we have been really on a fast pace trying, I mean, we have some of these stormwater pipes that are huge here in the community that we're working, we have on projects. And every time we do something, though, we end up building up somewhere else because of the, because we're flat and we don't have much drainage here. So I wanted to ask about that.
So last time we were in front of you about Aggieville, Rob Ott ran through about a five or six-year phasing plan. That five-year phasing plan addresses multiple segments within Aggieville in which we will design, go out to bid, and be under construction. There are several of those that include stormwater, including North Manhattan, which you'll talk about next Tuesday. Stormwater is a very critical component. There are times when Blumon Avenue becomes somewhat of a small river. We have video of some of our student population swimming down Blumon Avenue. We know we have improvements we need to make regardless of this project or not. You've got a site that's 100% impervious and, and runoff is occurring there today. Whether you put a five-story building there, you don't do anything at all, your stormwater issues are the same. So costing us more because of this project, it won't, not from a stormwater perspective. There's other infrastructure needs, mainly in Aggieville, that water line, water line running down Moro needs to be replaced tomorrow. This project won't drive that or slow it down. That need is there. So from an infrastructure standpoint, water, storm, I, I know enough about both of those to make the comment, those are coming anyway. Sewer is something I'd have to rely on Rob and Brian to, to give an update and Randy. I believe this can be accommodated. We've looked at a lot of the UCR and Enfro districts from a sewer and water perspective. I don't believe this building will tip us over from a capacity standpoint, but we can clearly identify that and, and relay that back to you.
Jason, hold that thought.
Yep.
Is, is some of the money that would be generated in this district for the, for the TIF district, what is planned to pay for some of those infrastructure items or not? Is it, it's an option or is it the plan?
It is the plan. We had a $20 million investment minimum for this. That would generate $675,000 annually. That would generate over $11 million for the project. We didn't anticipate more than 20 for the entire district over 20 years. This one project could generate half of the, of the entire district's revenue over a 20-year period. It's the same comment we made about the hotel. Hotel itself will generate a quarter of the revenue, the entire district anticipated for the 20-year period. We're maximizing that space, if we can maximize this space, we're three-fourths of the way for the entire district over the entire 20-year period with two projects. That is how you pay for parking garages, streets, additional amenities that we'd like to see down there. It's also what's driving it. We talked about the parking garage being a catalyst. That gives you the opportunity to look at these resources and put them back on the tax rolls and generate additional TIF dollars to pay for infrastructure. You're exactly right.
I'm concerned, or will be interested in watching the attention to the fit and character of Aggieville of this project. How, you don't know how many stories or what it's going to be yet, so it's probably commercial on the bottom and, and apartment, and residential up top.
There's a lot of options. And, and the zoning today allows for quite a few options, up to five stories.
Sure. So anyway, the design and the character of Aggieville, why don't you speak to that? I, I mean, I, I was forceful when we started talking about that part of the hotel, keeping in character with Aggieville. And I, so what can we expect here?
There are 16 secondary objectives, there are 15 primary objectives. I would say predominantly those 31 objectives address that exact question.
Okay.
There are priorities here that have been identified for a number of years. A lot of these were put in place by our planning staff as a result of the 2017 Aggieville Community Vision. The zoning process that you all approved for Aggieville also a result of that study and that process. So we already have zoning regs in place that will require a lot of those characteristics and features to be dealt with. This RFP reiterates those.
Does it make clear that we're not interested in another hotel?
Number two, must be a mixed use, including development of commercial, office, and/or residential.
And will the project generate any parking at all? Like a floor or built in to the development?
They're highly encouraged to incorporate parking within their project. Hard to sit here and say whether or not we would reject it.
Yeah. Will depend on our steering committee members.
Jason, I have a few questions as well. Well, if you get it out by the end of this week, that means it only gets one reading and for, for, so we need to get it right the first time around, is what I'm thinking. I wanted to know, this is pushing very close to Chipotle parking lot in Chipotle. What happens to that piece of it? Does the developer buy that? Is it for sale? Kind of like we were doing with Burger King, kind of pushing against Burger King on the garage piece, what happens here?
Yeah, our, our RFP really just addresses the city law. It's, it's large enough in square footage to be considered by itself. Nothing would prohibit a developer from approaching McCullough Development or the Chipotle ownership with, with a concept. Those would be privately negotiated. It's not the expectation of the city that either of them would have to participate. Nothing would necessarily prohibit them from participating, but we would expect that to be right now, as, as a way it stands, a private negotiation and not a public one.
And you don't know if that's happening right now or?
Haven't seen any proposals that, that would, nor have I heard from either of those owners suggesting folks are contacting them.
Okay. And, and your, I did send this RFP to several business owners in Aggieville and other people because I'm not familiar with, I feel like there's, there's this pressure to just do something right away because of a time constraint, the 20 years and the 17 years. And I want to make sure we, that I am thoughtful in this process because I may not get a second chance to revisit. So I emailed it to several folks to get their ideas and got, got some good feedback, but mostly again, parking concerns. And one of them pointed out in your secondary objectives for number, number 12 in your secondary objectives, to maximize, minimize parking onsite, but create a reasonable baseload of parking supply onsite to prevent complete dependence on surrounding public parking supply. I'm not sure I understand what that means. What is baseload, reasonable baseload of parking?
So the minimizing parking onsite is, is just the appearance of surface-level parking. So if, if they can create a layer of parking within their development, we don't necessarily want to view that. We want to minimize that view of parking, however it's approached. If you go subterranean, if you go below grade, obviously it's hidden. But that's, that's essentially minimize the, the view of it, but create a baseload that can carry some of your parking requirements. It's not to suggest 100% of this needs to go to the parking garage. But it is a recognition, you do have 450 stalls a half block away or a block away that are being utilized for the entire district.
Okay, so the recommendation is that they have some kind of baseload parking where it's kind of under? Or kind of where it's not visible?
Yeah, it could be within, it could be under. Think of the Blumont Hotel. You've got kind of a similar subgrade, but you've got above-grade parking as well. But it's not, and it is kind of hidden unless you get in it and then it's not. But from, from Blumont, you don't see the parking. From North Manhattan, you somewhat see the parking. It's screened. And I, I think that's really the intent here.
Okay. Parking facility will have about 450 spaces and be completed in 2021. So there's still residential apartments over there? So I'm thinking those parking spaces will still be available by McCullough for, for the renters and such, that that's not going to be taken away. Do you understand what I'm talking about?
I think I do. So when we zoned and allowed the Aggie Villas to construct, city required that parking lot go in. Not sure your UCR regs are going to require that. So it's something that's on the table. McCullough owns the lot. They own Aggie Villas. There's nothing the city's going to make them do either way. UCR regs, not UCR, wrong new acronym, I can't even recall either, but our old UDO regs will, will, have been drafted to the point where I'm not sure that parking's actually going to be required for Aggie Villas.
Okay.
So McCullough may have an opportunity to do something different.
But you're, you're saying that the city's not going to make McCullough sell or make Chipotle sell or anything like that? That's all up to the developer negotiating with those landowners to, if they can make a good enough deal that they think.
Yeah. This RFP, this RFP does not address those two lots or require anything of.
Well, I understand that it's not our responsibility and that there's a private ownership there. But this will be the catalyst for somebody wanting to sell or being approached to sell, which again brings back the problem of parking and such. And so that's all I'm trying to think about because I feel like I have one shot and that's it. And so I know we're going to check them out thoroughly. I, I'm not worried about that because I do feel this is something we, we need to move forward with and to make sure we are within that TIF district timeframe to, to capture the funds. I think there was a question for me about small businesses, our locally-owned businesses around that area because I don't know what's going to go in this development. I don't know if it's going to be something like a Whole Foods or Boxed Ones or, you know, name brand stores, or if it's going to be our local, local businesses that are already down there. And I think that's for, for them to figure out that kind of partnership that's happening. And I don't know about that alley space there either. It's, it's pretty bad also. So I'm, I'm not sure what's happening with that space. So I would like to know more about that. But I think this RFP, from, from what I've heard and from the reactions I have, I think we can work with it. But there's always going to be parking questions. I have no doubt. Because even in the garage, we haven't really fixed a fee. And, and that, we don't know what that looks like if this going up and the parking space is being gone and under development. And there's a lot of angst right now with a lot of business owners that need those angled parking and the parking garage and everything else. So it's not, it's not fun for them right now. So we need to make sure they're on board with it.
Okay, if there's no further commissioner comments, we can open this for public comments. We, we did not receive any by email today, so there were no public comments mailed into the commission before 4:00 PM today. Is there anyone here that wishes to make a public comment on this item tonight? Please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Monica McFarlane, 213 Parker Drive. I have a question for Mr. Hilters. In regards to setting up the RFP call, when they put in their proposals and it shows that they're going to use just that city lot space, if they actually wanted to approach private owners of the other lots, would they actually have to include that in their proposal to you beforehand?
I think I can answer that. I mean, any developer that, you know, is putting forth an RFP that probably includes that is of course going to, going to include that.
Okay.
It wouldn't be something that would be a side deal after, it'd have to be all-inclusive.
And then they have a, a ranking score that they would give to each of these. Would somebody who is proposing something that is expanded beyond the city lot going to be assessed the same way that somebody who's staying within the city lot would? Okay, thank you.
Okay, I'll thank you. Any other public comments on this item?
Good evening, commissioners. I'm Jason Smith, President and CEO of the Manhattan Area Chamber of Commerce. The chamber has a longstanding statement of support for Aggie, Aggieville's redevelopment and the community vision plan. An organization sees the district as a vital cog in our economic development strategies. We obviously are here to support the issuance of the RFP. We do this with the stipulation that the concerns of the Aggieville businesses be addressed as best as possible, including parking, design characteristics, and making sure the intended use is a complement to the district and not strictly a competitor. We appreciate the work from city staff on the proposed RFP and believe the parameters outlined are reasonable. We believe now is the time to move forward in terms of attracting maximum interest from outside firms and investors and maximizing the TIF potential. There's some federal programs as well that, that could potentially help this project that are in place now that may not be in place later. And so we know that there are a number of investors who use things like new market tax credits and redevelopment zones. As those things start to potentially go out, you may get less interest in the district. And if for whatever reason you're not satisfied, the responses meet the Aggieville Vision Plan, the RFP clearly states you aren't obligated to accept any of the proposals. They can either abandon the idea or reconsider something different at a later time. Again, the Manhattan Chamber continues to be committed to Aggieville and what we believe the redevelopment means to our long-term economic future. And we would ask that you approve the issuing of the RFP.
Thank you.
Okay, seeing none, we'll go back to the commission.
I just have one more thing. Yeah, I, I'm not interested in, in a, in a project that's going to run the current Aggieville business, small business owners out of business because that's, that's not the point. It's to add to, accentuate, enhance, create a better environment for everybody. So that's where, if the projects, the five, six, seven, eight, however many projects people end up submitting is something that's going to kill off what's there, I ain't going to, as on, if, on the selection committee, that gets a big thumbs down. So we're not interested in that. And I'm not interested in, in a project that creates more of what we have too much of, whatever that might be. And so we're looking for something that's, I am looking for something that's new and something maybe a little bit different, that doesn't compete, that doesn't create more of, of something that we, yeah, whatever that might be. And as far as the RFP part goes, if a former city attorney, Bill Frost, is good with it, I, I'm not going to argue about that. So I'm, I'm in favor of moving forward.
Okay, if there's no other commissioner comments, I guess we can entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move that we would approve the issuance of, of the request for proposals for the redevelopment of the city parking lot at the northwest corner of 12th Street and Laramie Street and appoint Commissioners Ready and Hattasol to serve on the selection committee.
Second.
Okay, city clerk, could you please call the roll?
Commissioner Hattasol?
Yes.
Commissioner Estabrook?
Yes.
Commissioner Ready?
Yes.
Mayor Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner Morse?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Okay, then we'll move on to item C, which is consider first reading of an ordinance to extend the face covering requirements in the city that are scheduled to expire April 1st, 2021. And I guess Katie is listed as a speaker. I assume she's going to join us by Zoom.
Mayor, this is Katie Jackson. Are you able to hear me?
Yes, we can hear you just fine. They're, they're trying to get some slides up on the screen and then you can take over from there.
Thank you.
Let me share it so she can see what you're up to.
Okay, it looks like we're ready to go, Katie.
Wonderful, thank you. If you have any trouble hearing me, please just, I, I can hear you fine. So I have two connections right now, so I can switch over to the other one if one fails. But tonight we're here to discuss a potential extension to the current city mask ordinance, which is set to expire on its terms on April 1st at 11:59 PM. Just as background, we have three short slides tonight. You all are very familiar with the terms of the ordinance, so I don't have any specific slides to address that, but happy to answer any questions about any of the mask requirements that have been in place. At this time in the city limits, there's no general, federal, or state requirement related to masks. There's no county-wide requirement in Pot County. Of course, the city limits are in both Pot County and Riley County. And then many of you are all already familiar with Riley County Local Order Number 20. It, what it says is that inside the city limits, that individuals must comply with the city's ordinance. Once the city's ordinance expires, if the local health order has the same language in it, then that requirement also expires in, within the health order. So just a reminder to everyone that the local health order number 20 does not specifically require individuals to wear masks in the city limits. It requires individuals to comply with what our ordinance says. Outside the city limits, however, local ordinance number 20 does require masks. The terms of those requirements are identical to the terms within the city limits in our ordinance. And just as a background reminder, the ordinance was based upon the original state of Kansas order issued by the governor. And next slide, please. We have one exception to that federal requirement. And Airport Director Jesse Romo is here tonight also, if you have any questions from his perspective. But as general background, early in January, the president issued an executive order that requires masks in public transportation, which includes airports. Following that, the FAA issued a requirement that airports adopt policies to enforce masks within the airports. The consequence for non-compliance, as stated by the FFA, excuse me, FAA, is that federal dollars could be suspended or terminated. So this is a grant assurance, which means a grant assurance is our contractual obligations anytime we receive a federal grant from the FAA. If we violate a grant assurance, we risk losing those federal funds. And then following that, the TSA issued a security directive that also states that airport sponsors must enforce mask-wearing on the premises. It further states that an individual who, who does not comply with that requirement will be refused access to the flight and to the secure area. Also, the airport operator is required to tell the individual to put on a mask and escort them from the premises if they refuse. Also, any violation by an individual in the airport must be reported to the, to TSA, which includes the individual's identifying information. Those are requirements of the federal government that the Manhattan Regional Airport is, is subject to. Next slide, please. With that as background for where we are now, what we're discussing tonight, we have first reading of an ordinance that is currently, has a date of expiration of Monday, May 16th. That date was selected for your consideration because of the school schedules and graduation weekends. As I stated before, in the Riley County Local Order, when our ordinance expires, the requirement to wear masks within the city of Manhattan will also expire within the boundaries of the, of the Riley County limits. They can obviously extend that and apply something in the city limits within Riley County. As you know, the, the issue that we have within the city limits is unique. We do have city limits in Potawatomi County. And so we have, if Potawatomi County does not identify a mask, excuse me, adopt a mask requirement, then obviously there would be different rules within the city limits of Manhattan if Riley County were to impose a mask requirement in the city limits through a local health order. Tonight, if the mask ordinance is not extended to at least May 11th, we would need to, we are recommending the adoption of an ordinance to address the Manhattan Regional Airport alone. We would, and I'm going to take a step back here and kind of talk about procedurally some options for you. So we do have first reading tonight. First reading under our system is just your, it's your approval to move on to second reading on the ordinance. Second reading is when the ordinance is actually adopted or repealed at that time. So I know that there has been some conversation about when this decision should be made. We have some positive trends in the city of Manhattan and in the counties and that there's a desire for, to examine the requirements in the counties because of that. So from a procedural perspective, if you wanted to obtain some more data and make sure those trends continued, adopting first reading tonight does not mean the ordinance has been adoption, adopted. You'd be able to continue to identify those trends and that data and make the final decision on March 16th. That's the second, the night of the second reading. So those are things to keep in mind. You know, if, if the ordinance is defeated tonight and that, the ordinance, the mask requirement would expire as the ordinance currently states on April 1st, there wouldn't be, we typically would not bring back an ordinance that has been defeated on a second reading. So it would, basically that decision would be made tonight if the ordinance is not approved for second reading. So I just wanted to point that out because I know we've had some questions about the procedure, but I'm happy to answer any questions about that or about the ordinance.
Jesse or Katie, what's the magic to May 11th? Is that when you have to have something in place for the FAA?
The May 11th date.
Thank you.
Comes from TSA.
Oh.
TSA.
And their security directive.
And Commissioner Hattasol, I'd like to, yeah, I'd like to add, Jesse is right, that's the TSA date. It's important to note that the FAA requirement does not have an expiration date as of now. It expires when the executive order expires, and that executive order does not have an expiration date. In the TSA security directive, they actually state that they wrote that security directive in consultation with the FAA. So I think that May 11th is our target date for now. And hopefully that's the date that they believe that executive order might be expiring. But it is important to note it could continue, that requirement could continue past May 11th if that executive order does not expire prior to that date.
So if we have to do something separate for the airport, we could word it that it would go as long as the executive order is in place or something? To extend it past May 11th, if it gets extended past May 11th? Or would you not want to?
Commissioner Hattasol? Yeah. I think we'd recommend a date certain in the ordinance, but we could put that May, the May 11th or a date thereafter. And then if we did see, prior to that date that we needed to extend it, we would just bring that back to the commission for consideration.
Okay, thanks.
Katie, this is Commissioner Estabrook. If, so you, you mentioned tonight for process, if on first reading, you mentioned approve or just not approve, what, what happens if we table? I'm just curious, is that was presented in the packet as an option? I'm just curious, is that was presented in the packet as an option that you didn't?
Sure, Commissioner. In response to that, I would say that if you were to table, so, so under our current resolution, our temporary operations resolution, we only have to have one reading of an ordinance. We have circumstances in which the administration or a member of the commission can request two readings. So if we table, I suppose we'd in that direction from the commission as to what happens next? Are we still going to have two readings of the ordinance? And if so, we don't have two legislative meetings scheduled prior to the expiration of this ordinance. I think that would create confusion for the community. So if you table, I would recommend that you table with direction about doing one or two readings. If that's the desire to table it, so that there's not a vote tonight, then really, probably the, given the deadline of April 1st and the fact that we only have one more legislative meeting scheduled for the month, it'd probably be better just to approve it and then make that final decision at your second reading on March 16th. Commissioner, the outcome, the outcome that we don't want to occur, that we tried to avoid with the prior extensions, was having a gap between the effective dates. So that can cause a lot of confusion in the community. If we, for example, if we were to table this and the date went past April 1st, there would be a period of time in which there would be that confusion about whether or not the ordinance applied or not. So we've really tried to schedule this so that we had a continuity, if that was the commission's desire.
Commissioner Hattasol, one last question. If we voted to extend it tonight, then in two weeks, when it came for second reading, could we, if all the numbers are still going down and everything's going great, could they, on the second reading, does it have to be approved? Because it was approved on the first reading, or could we vote it down at the second reading?
Yes, Commissioner, you, that's correct. You can vote it down on the second reading. In our system, it's unusual, the first reading is really just, it's not the adoption of the ordinance. The first reading is moving it to that final consideration step. So absolutely, if it's passed through tonight to second reading, so that that consideration can occur on March 16th, the ordinance has not changed after first reading, even if it's been approved by you tonight, it will not change until that vote on March 16th at second reading. So you would have the option to vote differently at that time, to approve or to not approve the ordinance.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Katie, it's also true that between the first and second reading, it could be modified?
Yes, Mayor, that's correct.
What I mean by that is like the contents of it, and my thought process is, I would like to support the Riley County Health Department, and so what would be interesting would be, and I understand the way they worded their health order, but somehow or other worded that so that it says, "The Manhattan City Mask Ordinance is in effect as long as the Riley County Mask Mandate is in effect." And then that way, it applies to the Pot County side, and we have consistency. And then try to do the same thing with the two airport requirements. Say basically, you know, the mask requirements are in effect at the airport for as long as the FAA and the TAA require it. And just keep it simple, and then, you know, two other agencies pull the trigger on terminating the mask. And that's the way I see it. Maybe that's too simplistic, I don't know.
Mayor, your first question was whether or not we could make changes between first and second reading, and the answer to that is yes. If the commission wanted to give us some direction on even alternatives you would like to see, we can prepare those alternatives for you for second reading. So we could look into an alternative that, work with Riley County and talk to them about options for wording it, so that we can get toward, at least try to accomplish what you're suggesting, to tie them together more closely. I'd like to have that opportunity to speak to the county councillor and see how we could collaborate to return with an option for you.
And that's just my intent, why I wanted to put that out there. I think it, it's an interesting, you know, compromise, I guess, in the middle. It basically says, okay, we'll let the EOC do their job and dictate what happens in the county, but also extend it to the city, because we got this anomaly of that county line, you know, in between. And then, we obviously can't go against what the federal government wants. We're not going to jeopardize any money at the airport. That's just totally, you know, out of line, so we have to go with that. And I think that's simplistic. I think people should be able to understand, you know, how that, how that works in the city. And it doesn't put a firm date on it, because I think, I did communicate with Julie at the Health Department a couple times this week about the concept, and they're going to be looking at the numbers, and, you know, they don't have a date set for how they might eliminate the mask ordinance. It really all depends. And I know there's concerns about the schools, but that's sort of where I landed on this after looking at all the different options. Commissioners, if you have any comments?
That makes a lot of sense to me, as far as what I've heard, and I'd like to give, so if we were to move forward, and rather than table, but move forward on first reading, give the county, give the health officer, and I think the other, the EOC members the opportunity to integrate their order with what Mayor Butler just described. Give that an opportunity for the legal counsel. That makes, that's the best solution I've heard. Getting all parties involved, including the medical input from the Health Department. So that is, that is absolutely something that sounds good to me, but I think if, if going beyond, this gives those entities until March 16th, right? March 16th is the next reading, to come up with that. If we're sitting at this, as I've indicated multiple times, I'm okay with the city portion sunsetting on April 1st. So this is that period of time where the councillors have an opportunity to make it work.
Commissioner Hattasol?
And if I may, this is, oh.
Go ahead, Katie.
Oh, thank you, I'm sorry. I can't see you all very well on my phone. I apologize for interrupting. I just wanted to make sure that the commission understood, and that I understood what you were asking for. If we, we are, we'll work with the Riley County Health Department, but just, just so everyone's clear, in order to apply whatever the rules that are developed or the scheme within Riley County, in order to apply that on the Pot County side, Riley County doesn't have that jurisdiction. So the city of Manhattan will have to act in order to extend those requirements into Potawatomi County. So if I didn't make that clear, I apologize, but I wanted to make sure everyone understood. Riley County is not able to put in those requirements in Pot County. We would apply those through an ordinance to that side, if that's part of the option that's presented.
Yeah, that's exactly the way I was trying to express that. That's the only way to legally make it happen, so we would still have an ordinance in some fashion, but the trigger points for ending it would be really controlled by the federal government or the County Health Department. Because when they ended it for the county, then we would end it for the city, and then it would end on the Potawatomi County side of the city. That's sort of my intent. The details, I think that's why we have Katie on the staff.
So, Commissioner Hattasol here again now for my last question. Yeah, based on what was reported in the Mercury from Commissioner Estabrook, I was all in favor of just having us, you know, vote it down tonight, even ending kind of immediately based on the faulty thinking that the county one would still apply until the county, but since the county one doesn't include Manhattan, that option is really, I was looking to get the city out of the, out of the mask ordinance business, really, but being with the Pot County side, we're stuck with some responsibility to deal with it one way or another, so.
Sure, I'll speak to it. You know, originally, I think this is like our, I don't know, fourth or fifth time we're extending it. Back in, I believe it was in December, my original proposal was to extend it till the end of May. The reason being, that's when the university and USD 383 have theirs till their academic year ends, and they were going to review it by summer and fall. So that was the original intent, and then a motion was made for April. So we agreed to April. But school, they still have it, whether it's higher education or K-12, till the end of their academic year, which appears to be May 16th, as opposed to the end of May. We received feedback from the Manhattan MHK Task Force, from Kansas State University, the Flint Hills Wellness Coalition, the Human Rights Advisory Board, downtown business, even chamber business. But most of them, actually, the ones I named except for the chamber, were all about, the survey that Gina presented also, were to extend it till at least the middle of May. The reason being of the confusion, we shouldn't have this confusion. And if we're going to put it in Riley County and the Executive Director for the Health Department and the Board of Health, the Riley County, Riley County land is vast. So it's not just the city of Manhattan when they make their decisions. So, but the population is in Manhattan. So when you remove all of the restrictions, that impacts the city of Manhattan. And if you just piecemeal it, like, oh, you need to wear a mask here, but not here, you need to wear it here, but not here, it's just confusing and sends mixed messages. Right now, we are at a point where we have a majority of people complying with it, and businesses also want it. They don't want to have to say, it's required in our business, but in that business, it's not. So when you pick and choose like that, it still comes back to a public health policy. It's like saying you can wear a seatbelt on this road, because, you know, there's so many accidents. But on this road, there's no accidents, so don't worry about wearing a seatbelt. We don't, we don't piecemeal things like that, and this will end, but I feel it's very important for our families and for our students and for our community to have that same message. The other piece is, we don't know when all of us are going to get vaccinated. We just realized that this week, we're not going to be getting vaccines. We might get them next week, there's no guarantee. We might get them the week after that, there's no guarantee. We don't know when we're going to be on phase three. We don't know any of these things. So with so many unknowns, and just to leave it out there, when just having it for six more weeks is not that much of a burden. It's a face mask. And I feel like we're just kind of kicking the ball to other people to make a decision for us. Like I said, this is something that has been, we've received tons of emails and for it, and we can count emails or not count them, tally them up, percentage-wise, whatever you see fit. But I feel this is part of our responsibility as city commissioners to look for the well-being of our community, and thus far, we have done a good job of it. And I think we need to stay on that path with Kansas State University, with our school district, with our hospitals, with our physicians. Those are the ones that are speaking loud and clear on this, and those are the experts I'd like to listen to. The local health order, they can do any number of things. They may revoke it. I don't know. I wasn't in agreement with everything they do, because we don't have a say in that. We have zero control, and we're just giving that control to somebody else, hoping for the best, when we can actually control what's in our community right now.
Of course, you know, I think this proposal does what the intent is saying of what you're talking about, what I'm talking about. The difference is, I think the way we approach it, and I've felt for a year that the approach we should have taken was follow the process that the city had put in place for years. The same procedure we use for floods, tornadoes, is we have an EOC, we put people in charge of it. We have an incident commander, we have consistency, and we have the same policy, and we have one person in charge. And the people that should not have been in charge of this is the city commissioners. And I know we won't agree on that, but, but that's always been my, my belief. And I think we have to put our trust in the Health Department Director and the procedure she's got to bring in the information. And if we don't trust the Health Department, then we should recommend she be fired. That's the two extremes, the way I see it. So what I'd like to do is open up for public comment. I think we have a few people here that would like to talk to this. Now, I did, Commissioner Ready already mentioned, we got a few emails, you know, on this topic today. And the cutoff was 4:00 PM, and so the city clerk, you know, said it was about 8:00 to 10:00 by 4:00 PM. You know, my count was close to 100 by 5:30, and I categorized them, and they were split probably two-thirds for, one-third against. And there were some different themes in there, and feel free to chime in if I miss one that needs to be highlighted. But, but it was interesting to me that we had business owners in town. Some are perfectly happy with the change in the health order, and they're going full bore. They want their dance floors open, and they want full capacity. There's others that would like to maintain tighter restrictions, even in restaurants. But that's not common across everybody. They're split out there. We got a couple of emails from businesses over on the Pot County side that wish us to continue it. And part of the thrust I got from that was, some of the smaller businesses just don't want to be the heavy. They don't want to be the person that puts a sign up that says, "I want you to wear a mask." They would rather the city commission be the heavies. And I understand that, because then you get customer interaction issues. Some of the businesses believe that the mask thing is good for business, and some believe it's not. And so the emails go down those directions, and that's interesting. Many, many people talked about USD and the fact that, you know, this is important for the schools. You know, my, my view on that was that USD boundaries don't mirror the cities or either of the counties. And so, you know, and Aaron, you spent time on school board. It's almost like, sorry, but the school board's going to have to also deal with this, because, because the jurisdictions don't align. And so that's an interesting, an interesting point, point there. The Health Department Director did send a letter to the city stating that she supported keeping it, because she realizes, as Katie pointed out, that the way she worded the Riley County order would actually eliminate it in the city, and that really wasn't the intent. That, you know, we're tripping over each other on this. So, so I think Julie's fully in support of it, and of course, KSU is in support of it. And, you know, a number of the emails, I'll just say, I consider to be less than cordial. I'm sure some of you will agree with that. And that's unfortunate that that happens, but I really do appreciate the people that send emails, because I do try to read them all. I may miss one when you start getting 100, 150 in a day. And I know I didn't answer all of them today, because some came in after 5:30. And I tried to, you know, send a reply back, which essentially covered what I said tonight about trying to, you know, be consistent and support the Health Department and set up a procedure that I think is a good compromise. It's going to do what we can, and I sure hope the state will help us with the vaccines, because Commissioner Ready is 100% correct. We got to get this vaccine thing moving, because that's the secret to it. So that's enough on that some.
Mayor, I had a question, if Katie's still available. The, regarding the end date, current, we've continued and extended, and we, it's always, you know, been this date, but as I, before I came in, I was talking to the County Commission Chairman Ford, Commissioner Ford, and he was indicating there isn't an end date on the county's version. Is it required we have an end date?
City Attorney Katie Jackson speaking again. I hope you can hear me okay. No, it is not required that we have an end date. When we adopt this ordinance, it goes into the city code, and we can just adopt it, and then as, at any point repeal it based upon what the county has done. We've done an expiration date, just at the, just at the will of the commission and the community, so that they had timeframes in mind. But we can exclude that from the ordinance and then respond when we have an end date from Riley County.
And potentially, you could incorporate that, that's what you're going to work on, that language, that would, when they end, it triggers our end, potentially?
Yes, I think that's what we would like to discuss with Riley County and talk to them a little more about that, and see if that's an alternative that we can provide.
I do have a comment about that. They started far later than we did, so we were already on the front end of this. And in several of the meetings I've been with, on some, a few of them, they've indicated April 1st. April 1st is what they've indicated. "We're going to look at it, and we'll figure it out then," is what they said, and that's been consistent with April 1st, and I think that's because of what we have. So if they repeal it, and they said, "We don't need it anymore. We're doing terrific. We don't need it here." That's it. That means everybody else is kind of on their own, and, you know, you wear it when you want or don't wear it when you want. It's not about the boundaries of the school district for USD 383 with all those schools or with the university. It's about having the same message for everybody, no matter where you are in the city of Manhattan. I'm probably on that very last tier of getting a vaccine. I'm not over 65. I have fairly good health. I can work remotely. So I know I'm not going to get a vaccine anytime soon. But there are a lot of people that also won't get a vaccine anytime soon, because we don't have the vaccines. And what we're saying is, it's okay, you know, give that control to somebody else to figure out when they want to, what to do with the masks, when that is our responsibility. It is city of Manhattan commission's responsibility, and we are not the only city that's been doing this. There's lots of cities doing it. There's lots of cities doing it because a lot of counties have opted out for so long. And it felt on the, it fell on the city commissioners of some of those communities. I think Womigo has it, I don't think Alapot County has it. So I think there, there's different rules for this. And the ones that have consistently voted no are going to continue to vote no. That, that's just the way this is going to be. But I feel we've done so well in saying, K-State, you do it, USD 383, 383, do it. A few businesses, if you want to do it, you can do it, but we don't have to do it in the city of Manhattan. And that's what we're coming down to. We're not a rural community like some of the other rural areas in the, in the county. And when the county makes their decisions, they're also going to be listening to their rural constituents. And if that's going to be the driving force for some of them, then we are going to be left out of that discussion. We don't have any control over it at all.
See, I, I want to continue with public discussion, but I, you know, I would just say that's a, that's a different end philosophy. You know, I believe Julie understands that 75% of the population of the county is in the city and considers that in the health order. And, and we have empowered them to do that, so I, I know that's just a, we'll, we'll just be, we'll just agree to disagree on that. It's the way we want to approach it, but I, but I do believe we're in sync on the intent. Go ahead, Mark.
Well, yeah, my only comment to that is, is I ain't interested in controlling people. And, and controlling people's lives, because I know it's unfashionable these days to point out personal freedoms and, and personal responsibilities and people making decisions for themselves. That's very unhip and uncool, and, and you get canceled for even saying stuff like that. But, but that's, that's what the people that I talk to, it's like, I don't want the government telling me, at this point, after 11 months, people have decided whether or not they think masks are a good idea and helpful, and why most people will continue to wear them and, and comply, they don't want to. And because they can't, even Lord Fauci says with, with the vaccinations, that he doesn't want people going out to eat even after they got a vaccination. So that's not the solution. That's not going to end the mask mandate as far as the CDC and Senior Fauci. So it's one of those things where, at some point, we're going to have to trust people to live their lives in a way that they feel safe and comfortable, and the government can't guarantee a no-risk life. And the thing is, we can't keep trying to say, okay, as the government, we're going to protect everybody from everything. That's not why people came to America to start with, and that's not what a lot of the people want. They want to be able to make their own decisions and take on the risks that they want. And I don't really think that, that the community spread part is, is cut way down because I, because I just don't think it's, it's as big of a risk as, as it used to be, for whatever reason. Maybe it's, maybe it's the vaccinations, maybe more people have it, it's harder for people to get it now. I'm positive for antibodies, and I don't think, I don't remember when I might have had it or been exposed. So a lot of people probably didn't even know they had it. And so, that, that's my big point is, you want to try to control everything and everybody's behavior, I ain't interested in that. And I think that's probably part of the dysfunction of a lot of government is, is that different argument. Trusting people to do the right thing and make the right decisions and insisting people do a certain way because that's better for them. That's, that's something that I'm going to continue to argue against.
Okay, for those of you who've been waiting out there patiently to make a public comment, we'll go ahead and open public comment. Please remember to come forward and state your name and your address, and you have five minutes. And I believe one individual tried to speak earlier, if you want to come on up and start us off? Linda wants to go first, okay, fine.
Mayor, city commissioners, good evening. I'd first of all tonight like to thank you for your early leadership in adopting a city ordinance requiring face masks back in, in July. And then again, for the extensions of that, that ordinance over the past several months. Your leadership truly has been effective in helping this community curb the virus and get us to where we are today. So tonight, on behalf of Kansas State University leadership, I am here to ask for your support once again in extending the city's face mask ordinance past the current expiration date of April 1st of this year. There are numerous public health studies that have shown face coverings truly are the first line of defense in helping to curb the spread of this COVID-19, because we're not out of the woods yet. As a result of everyone's hard work in supporting the, the health issues that the county and the city have put forward, we are seeing positive trends, and that's a good thing. We're seeing positive trends in the community regarding the virus and the number of the infections going down. The hospital rates are also going down. And we are pleased to see that the number of vaccinations are beginning to increase each week. And we do have a good system in this community for administering these vaccines compared to what we've seen in other communities. We are truly beginning to see light at the end of the tunnel for this virus, but we don't want to lose ground yet. There's some unknowns out there with the mutations of this virus. We need a little more time to study that, based on what we're hearing from our own medical experts, as well as the public health experts. And therefore, we don't want to lose sight of, and this ordinance for the face mask, because again, they are a first line of defense in everything that's been put forward in ordinances and, and, and safety protocols for the COVID. Even this morning on the news, the CDC Director strongly warned the public and local jurisdictions to continue to wear face coverings and follow other protocols, and there's several reasons for that. We don't have enough people immunized yet. The vaccine is not, does not provide instant immunity. It takes at least 30 days in there for that immunity to build up. And the herd immunity threshold for COVID-19 is still unknown. Now unfortunately, the Riley County Health Order, Order Number 20 currently requires face mask, it does require face mask, but it does expire on April 1st. And the unfortunate part is, we have no assurances that that will be extended. So at K-State, like many other businesses here in Manhattan, we are continuing to require face masks and our other health protocols related to COVID. And we're doing that through the end of the spring semester. Again, we do see light at, at the end of the tunnel, but we need a little more time to get there. And that's why we would like to see this, this extension made at least through the end of May. We ask for your support in extending it. We know that ordinances do work. It does influence behavior. Without the ordinance, you don't get that same acceptance and the, and the application of the behavior. So please, on behalf, on behalf of your constituents and Kansas State University, please extend the face mask ordinance at least through May.
Okay, thank you, anyone else wish to speak on this topic?
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. Mark Bashamp in another role of Chamber Board Chair. So, just want to really clarify, I know there's a letter and an email that was sent by the chamber. Commissioner, I apologize for not responding back, but I was traveling this afternoon. But the chamber is not against the mask ordinance, I just want to be very clear about that. We're not against the mask ordinance. What we were seeing with meeting the BAC this morning and, and different meetings that we had at email exchanges today with the exec board, we were seeing actually a, a possibility of this not passing tonight. So this, what we encouraged was to follow the health officials and, and adopt the Riley County ordinance to follow for the city of Manhattan, so it does apply to both Riley and Potawatomi County at the same time. So, we were seeing it as not passing, but yet we know that in the email exchanges and everything, that everybody was seeing it as a need as well. But let the health officials make that guidance as to when that is. If it's not, if it's, needs to be extended past April 1, you know who to lobby? And that's the health officials to get that extended into May. And, and then that way it follows, and that way you're not up here sitting up here making decisions every time it needs to change. You can follow the health officials. So, that was a clarification really in, in all the meetings that we've had and the, and the email that was sent to you all today. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you, is there anyone else that wishes to speak?
I just want to, Mayor, I just want to clarify one thing with, with Mark. What we have is an ordinance, the county doesn't have ordinance for the face mask.
Correct, but you would, you could adopt the Riley County ordinance.
Yeah, and we have lobbied plenty of times for plenty of things. It doesn't happen. So I'm just saying, this is, this city commission was elected for the city of Manhattan. And, and that's the role we are playing. We lobbied them far before they agreed to even move forward with the face mask mandate. When the chamber agreed for the city to move forward with the face mask mandate, they did not do it at that time either. They also did not, they opted out of the governor's request also to do it. So that's just a different version of what lobbying might look like and who lobbies.
Okay, thank you, but I want, I want to remind the commission that, you know, our policy on public comment was not to engage in debate with the speaker or allow debate between the staff and the speaker. So just, just remember that. So anyone else would, would like to speak on this topic tonight?
Hello again. Mike Bonella, still living at 829 Dehoff Drive. Thank you so much for the opportunity to come and speak tonight. I don't have a really well-prepared statement, I just figured I'd tell you how I feel about all of this as a business owner here in Manhattan. We're, our 18th year being a business at Sunflower Pet. I don't want to get, you know, terribly personal here, but I have hit the genetic jackpot on autoimmune conditions. In 1997, I was diagnosed with Goodpasture Syndrome. Makes for some interesting reading later if you want to look at it on Google. It was nearly fatal. Pretty much all of my major organs started to have failure. It left me with COPD, heart problems, I had a seizure disorder from it. Later that year, I was also diagnosed with Wagner's Granulomatosis, another autoimmune disease. And most recently, I was diagnosed with rheumatoid arthritis. In order to keep functional, I have to take 200 milligrams of a drug called Emuran, which is an immunosuppressant, every day. I also, coincidentally, this month, have two infusions that I do every four months of a drug called Rytuxan, all to suppress my immune system. As a business owner, a retail business owner, it's very scary for me to even allow the public in my store. When this all started a year ago, we voluntarily, even though we were considered essential, we closed our doors, we started having curbside pickup, we developed a website for free same-day delivery here in town. We tried to adapt the best we could. We do have problems still even with the city mandate of the occasional Karen, as you might say, coming in and complaining about the masks and, you know, every day I have to remind people to pull their mask up over their nose just for my own safety. I'm currently wearing an N95 mask for my own safety. I was nervous about coming and speaking tonight in public. I don't like going shopping anywhere. I had to go and get some hardware supplies at a hardware store. And it's just discouraging as hell to see people walking around without their masks on and then be told by the management of those stores that they're not allowed to enforce it because of fear of being shot. That's what I was told at this corporate store. So, I'll tell you, in July, when the city came out with the mask mandate, I was so appreciative, and I felt like the city had my back. And I am asking you again to continue to have my back. I have not been able to get a vaccine yet. Even with all of my health problems, I cannot get a vaccine yet from the county because I'm only 50 years old. Right now, you have to be 65 or older. So I'm considered phase three despite having all these health problems. My family's doing everything we can to stay safe. And so far, it's worked. But I just feel like I'm dodging a bullet every day in my own place of business. So, for those of you who are opposed to, you know, masks and say they don't work or whatever, I'd like for you to share your opinion on what you think I should do. Should I close my business and try to live off of the government? I mean, what options do I have? So having this mask mandate is a vital thing for me. And then also, I'd like to point out that since the county is starting to loosen restrictions because the numbers are going down, let's see how that goes for a little while before we take away the one thing that we have that's protecting people, which is these masks. We're going to have a St. Patrick's Day parade, an event in the very near future. And, you know, they say it takes a couple of weeks for things to, for symptoms to develop after being at an event where the virus is spread. Well, according to the timeline, that April 1st deadline that's coming up doesn't really give time to see what happens from these loosened restrictions and from that event in particular. So I just would like to reiterate that, you know, I really, really appreciate the city having our back. And it's very important to us that you continue to do so. We have had an increase lately in incidence of people coming in and being rude, refusing to wear a mask. I had to ask someone to leave the other day. I don't want to do that, you know? And it's a lot easier to say, hey, there's a citywide mandate, can you put on your mask than saying, you know, without that behind me, just say, hey, you need a mask wearer in my business, people are going to get upset. So I understand my time's running out. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak, and we appreciate you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak?
Doesn't matter what microphone. My name's Joe Lister. I come here as a concerned parent. Wearing a mask reduces oxygen in the blood. Wearing a mask increases carbon dioxide levels in your blood. Wearing a mask increases the risk of headaches, brain fog, difficulty concentrating, and exhaustion. There are no studies that I could find on long-term mask use on kids. Children with airway obstructions such as wearing a mask could lead to chronic respiratory acidosis, which is linked to cardiovascular disease, cancer, and behavior conditions. My concern is the thought of the, of the psychological, emotional, and physical damage these kids are experiencing. There is no evidence to suggest that a face mask worn by healthy individuals are effective in preventing people from becoming ill. Kids are missing out on very important life skills such as learning facial expressions and proper grammar. Kids are being even to ask, or required to wear masks even in PE. My own personal experience with my kids and their friends talking to them is complaining about being able to breathe. I understand what the CDC says, and I think their new recommendation is making the mask tighter and wearing two cloths. I mean, I don't understand at what point we don't realize we could put a bag over our head and dig a six-foot hole too and get away from this virus. This is getting out of hand, in my opinion. I ask myself a question all the time, if these masks are so effective, why didn't we wear them when the flu was going? I, I, I don't get that. And I wonder where the flu went, because I've never heard of anybody in the last year having the flu. But if the masks work, why didn't we wear them to curb the stop, or stop curve? I witness in my profession multiple times a year machines breathing their own exhaust. It's a call I get quite frequent, frequently. Every time my technicians find that, the machines don't work. I don't know a mammal on earth that is okay with breathing their own exhaust in. I can't even sit in this room and do it because we're breathing our own carbon dioxide. So my question to you guys, to all you commissioners, is why are the kids required to wear masks? They are proven to not be super-spreaders. This is a proven fact. So my question is, adults, one thing, kids are the other. Why are they required to wear masks?
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak on this topic tonight? Keith saying, no one will close public comment and come back to the commission.
I want to weigh in because at first, I mean, as, as Commissioner Hassel noted, I think if you read the headline in the newspaper, it says something that I want to seek the end of the mask mandate. If you read the article, I, I would argue that it does not say that. And I've never been, I've never said that I want, that masks don't work. I've never argued that we shouldn't have masks as long as the appropriate healthcare people tell us that we should wear them. What my argument has been is the process. And so, what I think this ends up with every few months or, is we get hundreds of articles and emails or the latest from whatever science or blog that tells us and confirms what people... the latest from whatever science or blog, that tells us and confirms what people already think. And from the very beginning, when we first shut down the St. Patrick's Day Parade last year, there was this argument about face masks, or there was an argument about even doing that. And what was the virus? And I think at that point from on, that point on, I said, I don't think we should be giving medical advice. We're not elected to give medical advice. And that is my, still my position. And that's why I think I would entertain and hope the council can come up with a way to tie what we do to enforce. And the only reason that we got down on this path anyway is because of the Pot County element of the city. There's a necessary part there that I'm willing to acknowledge, that if we want to have consistency, we can do our part by following that directive. I also want to let people kind of understand what I've heard and what I've seen evolve, is last summer, things were different. I think we've heard, even tonight, from various commissioners, that they didn't want to do it. And they were these, had these, didn't make it work before, and we kind of can't trust them, or issues about control. And this is not the same Board of Health that existed before. They've had elections, more recent than any of us. The people have weighed in on who should represent their Board of Health. And they also have indicated to me that they would be willing to support masks, I think, through at least the end of the school year as the Board of Health. And as you've indicated, and the health officer certainly wants to in Riley County. What's missing in this discussion is where the heck is Pot County Board of Health? Where the heck is Pot County's leadership? This isn't, the only reason we're in the middle of this is because the two counties couldn't agree last summer to be on the same page, in a unified command, and lead this region through the pandemic. And we've just been playing the middle people. And it's not our role. And we'll continue to do it because the two counties won't work together in a meaningful way around health policy. But it's no different than if you walk, if you walk across the river and you're in blue township, you're suddenly in an area where there's no mask and there's different rules, right? It's not, Riley County is going to have masks as long as they're appropriate, according to the Board of Health people that I've talked to and the health officer. The issue's been with Pot County getting on board with that. And if that drags us into a revision of an ordinance that can be worked out, I guess that's what we have to do. But it's really disappointing that the mercury decided to say I was against masks. I've never indicated that. And masks work. People should wear them. People should also follow health professionals and their advice, and not politicians here that have to make decisions based on various things that don't always include your health.
I'd like to say something. Seems we've all had something, an opportunity, more than one in some cases. I believe that the Center for Disease Control, the head of the White House, coronavirus, I have confidence in the leadership that's there now. And I have, their warning yesterday, or the day before, was for local jurisdictions not to relax the protocols they have in place that have worked pretty well. I mean, we, the best we can, although, you know, there's some question. There is some revisionist history taking place here about the beginnings and what happened. And as I recall, the Riley County Commission failed our community. And the reason we have an ordinance in the city of Manhattan is because Riley County government would not put one in place. The Riley County Commissioners have designated themselves as the Board of Health for Riley County. They are not scientific either, or medical. And quite frankly, the medical task force, Clinical Task Force, has not even been consulted. And they're supposed to be advising the EOC and the Health Director, and that isn't happening either. There are flaws in this process. And I expect that our community is an enlightened community, and would respect the science and respect what you do during a pandemic. And, you know, Fort Riley, the military, they took care of this pandemic. They have been blamed for 100 years for spreading the 1918 pandemic. We've all heard it, because they sent people around the world. That isn't the case this time. The military pretty much kept their people in place so as not to spread it. And fortunately, you know, we will, it's been unfortunate in Kansas that every, all of the 105 counties have the ability to make independent decisions. And we've seen that erratic, inconsistent behavior across this state. And we've seen pockets of that virus spring up. And suddenly, they get the message, people die. And then they put the, some of the protocols in place. I think we, I am committed to laying the most, the best possible help that we can. And I don't know what that means, any more than anybody else does, but I do believe in following the medical advice. And I'm not sure, when the local medical profession is ignored, that we are getting the best advice. We have had, anyway, some inexperience. We have seen a lot of missteps that we shouldn't have, that we should have been better thought out. There are too many, anyway, I don't know how many people on the EOC are medical experts either. We have lots of issues. If we were to do, what is it you do after something happens? You do an after-action report? When this is over, we will be, we need to leave some reports on what happened, what did we do wrong with regard to this. I respect Kansas State University. I respect Fort Riley's, and the local school district, and the state, and the Centers for Disease Control. We have the information. We just flip our heads and say, I'm not doing it. I got a better idea. And I don't think that we do. And so I am inclined, and I would vote to support, to keep a mask ordinance in place until our schools are out. K-State, USD 383, I think that's the, protecting our people. And so, wearing masks has worked. It is, they call it the lowest level of safeguard. And so, to me, it is a simple thing that keeps other people from, me from affecting them. I think that after you've had COVID, and after you have the shots, suddenly, you aren't quite as, don't feel as vulnerable as you did before. And we have only had about, I'm going to guess, 20% of the people here in Riley County that have had a vaccination. I don't know the numbers. I'm willing to say 20%. I think there's another 10% that KDHE has announced that at least 10% of the people in the state of Kansas have had COVID. That's 30%. And we've seen the faults and flips and starts on the distribution of the vaccine, and we're all in a holding pattern, so many waiting to be called. And it's a day to celebrate. But then we find out that the vaccine will only be good, for sure, for 90 days. You're only immune for 90 days after you get the second shot. What kind of long-term reliance is that? All of this, all of the sciences, the policymakers, at all levels, have been just struggling to do the right thing. And, but I don't think it's the time to remove the controls. I don't want to start over. I don't want any businesses being locked down. I think masks are the easiest thing we can do that makes sense. There, thanks.
I'm just going to make a few more comments on this discussion. You know, when we get elected, and Mark was saying, I don't want government involved in any of this, that's our job. Every day, when you make ordinances, you make ordinances every single day about one thing or another, whether it's stormwater pipes or anything, fees, park fees, whatever it is, those are, that's what we do. And part of keeping public are safe is also part of that job. And that's why we have ordinances and things that we try to take care of to keep our community safe. Commissioner Astorbrook referenced the past commissioners on the county and the current commissioners and how they're different. So the past commissioners were approached several times by Kansas State University, by different businesses, and they were pretty rude and nasty, and said, no, we're not going to do it. So it didn't happen till almost November, I think. So the current commissioners removed all the restrictions. And maybe you have an in with Commissioner Ford, but I was shocked. I had no clue. Kansas State University was equally shocked. And they had their meetings. There were a lot of other entities, businesses, that were having meetings, figuring out what to do now. Do we stay at capacity? Do we get rid of all of it? What do we do? So there was this, there was this sense of panic because there was lack of communication, because somebody else made that decision, and now we have to live with it. That's where we don't want to be. If those conversations are having in a public manner, where there's public comment and public decisions, and a voice is being heard, that's great. But I don't want to come on Facebook at 5:00 on a Wednesday or Tuesday and figure out, oh, we don't have any more restrictions. And even the, one of the county commissioners didn't know, there was a press release going out about that. So however that took place, that's not a place for us to be and say, well, we had no idea. We had no idea they were going to do that. And I can truly say I had no idea what was coming. So when we talk about lobbying, I can't lobby against or for something if I don't even know it's happening. All I knew was they were going to look at a local health order 20. That's about it. I thought maybe they were going to increase capacity. I thought maybe they were going to fiddle around with, you know, what time bars close or not close, or something like that. But I was not part of that conversation. I didn't expect to be part of that conversation, just like I don't expect to be part of the face requirement or mask conversation with the county commissioners and the EOC and Julie Gibbs. I don't expect to be called. I don't expect any one of us, maybe you do. The rest of us don't expect it. So as elected officials, we are so much about public interest and conversations and communications in our decision-making process. I'm not privy to that. Maybe the chamber is privy to it because I'm not a business. But at the same time, we take care of the entire community. So I'm not about to let somebody else make that decision for me, and me wake up the next day and feel, oh, my God, I didn't know that was happening. I don't want to be in that position. I was just in that position last week. I hated it. And I don't want to be there again. And this is not in the best interest of our community to leave it to somebody else who is not going to have public conversations about it. They don't even have to take a vote. They take a vote to revoke it. They don't have to take a vote for a public health order to go in place. So where do we fit in, in that picture? Certainly not. I don't know if Ron's being called. I have no idea who's having those conversations. I don't even know who's on the EOC. So no, I'm not going to abdicate our responsibility to somebody else to make our decision for us. That's not going to happen. I believe the university and USD 383 and our businesses expect us to make the right decision for our community with public comment, 100 emails, with this type of discussion. That doesn't happen with a local health order. And that's what I'm scared of. We can hope and pray they'll do April 1st. I don't know. I've been disappointed with everything so far. So I'm not going to give that up. And it's not about Pot County and Riley County. I'm talking about the city of Manhattan. So that's where I'm at. I do support the ordinance we have in place to extend it till May 16th. I think that is the best thing to do because this is the city of Manhattan. I don't know what the next local health order is going to say. I don't know when the next few vaccines are going to come. I don't know what's going to happen. But this is something I do know, and this is something that we can do. Therefore, when it comes up, I will be supporting it.
Yeah, I wanted to make a comment. I knew that, you know, they were revising the health order, and I just provided my comments to Julie. She's always replied to me. I mean, everybody has the ability to do that. I also heard, you know, a lot of people say, well, she's not listening to any of the medical people. Well, I don't have any proof of that. I would assume that, you know, she's talking to various ones. I know at least one doctor that's part of the health thing who gives him advice. I won't use his name. But, you know, I think that may be an extreme portrayal, because it sounds like, you know, you're basically trying to throw the Health Director under the bus. And I'm not, I'm not sure I buy that.
I'm not throwing her under the bus because she has the privilege to do that. What I'm saying is, I don't want to put the face mask ordinance in hers because we can't have that discussion. The local health order happened. I did not do anything about it because it happened. That's it. You just live with it.
Commissioner Reddy, can I, I have a question. Can you, if, can, in what scenario, what are some, we've had this discussion every time, so I hate that I even am asking this. Again, what scenario, what are the metrics, what are the decisions that you need to know? Since you're not in a position that you're trusting the information to go through the health officer, where are you building your decision to not, to take away any, because honestly, the health officer has, has not indicated she wants to remove the health order. So all those other things, those restrictions, and the fear that that's an indication of what she's going to do, or anyone's going to do on the face mask, there's nothing the city commission can do to increase those restrictions. Those will happen up and down. So that, set that aside for me. But what, in your mind, is how the face mask ordinance expires?
No, I think that's a great question. So the people I often refer to are Bob Koppel from Viatrity, because they see what happens within the hospital field, not only within the city of Manhattan, but throughout, because they know a lot about Viatrity throughout Kansas. The Manhattan Clinical Task Force, I email them when I need references, and are we going in the right direction? What do you think we are doing? I communicate with the Flint Hills Wellness Coalition. I look at the CDC guidelines, and I look at the state of Kansas guidelines that are given out by Dr. Norman. That's what I follow. And when they say everything's good to go, we're good to go. I am not, I have, I am not one just to say we should have this for the sake of having it. There are a lot of things that I might disagree about, and that we might have a civil conversation. This, to me, is a civil conversation. And we don't have to agree on everything. But we do refer to certain professionals in making decisions. For example, I know squat about asphalt and concrete. I don't know it, but we make decisions about it because I talk to experts that are in it. RFP, I don't know much about RFPs. So I consult and talk to businesses that it might impact. So I do that type of outreach to come to a decision when we need to end or start something. And that's how I came to this instance, far before everybody was on board. And when they suggest K-State and USD 383, their students are still going to be wearing them and requiring them, I feel we need to be consistent on our message.
We don't think we'll change any personal philosophies on how we want to approach this. So I think we should entertain a motion. I'd like to call the question and resolve this for this evening, anyway.
I make a motion. Let me find my sheets. Okay. Comments. I move that we approve the reading of ordinance amending section 23-73 of the
of the CD code extending the term of the face mask ordinance requirements to eleven fifty-nine PM on May sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-one.
I second the motion.
Okay, city clerk, please call the rule.
Commissioner Estherbrook.
Yes.
Commissioner Ready.
Yes.
Mayor Butler.
Okay, yes, but again, this is under the caveat that we get this thing rewritten by second reading, or I'm going to vote no.
Commissioner Morris?
Yes.
Commissioner Haddasall?
No.
Motion carries four to one.
Okay, we've been here for a while. How about we take a, we got one more item on here because we moved to the end of the agenda, the Parks and Rec fees, correct? What's that? Okay, you don't want a break? Okay, we won't have a break. Let's just drive on. So let's take the consent agenda item, which I believe was item E. I'm going to go back and look. D, D as in delta. And let the Parks Director take us through the information. It's all yours, Eddie.
So while he's working on some things, I just want to, a portion of the ordinance we're wanting to amend is a section that's been around since the eighties. And it was, it references when we adopt fees for programs. And that's about all we ever did in the eighties. So since the eighties, we've done things like facility rentals, pavilion rentals, admission fees. We have a scholarship program, remending the ordinance to allow the resolution, as opposed to the ordinance, cover it in the future. There's no specific fees or anything attached to this action tonight. It's just simply improving the ordinance to capture the gamut of things we adjust. And then you would consider a future resolution to make changes to some of those particular issues.
So Mayor, I just want to say why I called this to the end of the general agenda. It is a little bit about fees, but I think the major, my major issue with it is that it's, it leaves the, all Parks and Recs henceforth. The city manager and the Director of Parks and Rec will be establishing and adjusting the certain Parks and Rec fees administratively. So the city commission will not be part of that discussion. And I feel like if we're going to increase fees or whatever it might be in programs, that is not the problem or the part I, I feel we will be doing that. I mean, we increase fees all the time. The part where it is not up to us for the city commission to be part of that discussion or the public. And, and that's the point I want to point out. And I did listen to the Parks and Rec meeting from last night and had a conversation with Ed Kleemack this afternoon. I do feel we need to be transparent when we are increasing fees and such. So this isn't an anti-fee discussion. It is about who makes that decision.
You know, my thought on that, I think, you know, again, the people closest to the operation should be making the decision. I felt that way about, you know, good example, maybe the animal shelter. Because we, we change what they do there, and Debbie down there makes the determination on what the fee's going to be to adopt an animal. Because when you have a flat fee, it, it just doesn't work. And you have to have somebody that's down there that's able to adjust. And so that's sort of the way I see it. But, but I'm more into empowerment and less control.
Haddasall here.
Mayor?
Oh. Go ahead, Katie. I'll wait.
Thank you. It's City Attorney Katie Jackson. I just want to clarify what the ordinance says. The ordinance itself does not empower the city manager or the Director of Parks and Recreation to set fees administratively. The ordinance says that the city commission may adopt a resolution that authorizes them to set those fees administratively. So by adopting this ordinance tonight, you are not giving that power to the city manager and the Parks and Rec Director tonight. Instead, in the future, they could, they could present you with a resolution that has fees in it, and that gives them some authority to amend or change those fees. That would be subject to the commission's approval. So they will not have this ability without you adopting a resolution in the future. I just want to clarify that that's what the ordinance says. It does not authorize them to do that now. They have to, you, you, the city commission, have to adopt a resolution that does that in the future.
Okay, and then, thank you for that clarification, Katie. But the end result would probably be a resolution that would empower them is just where I'm looking at long-term.
I might, I, I highlighted what Katie just said, and since, in, in red, what I intended to show you tonight, as Katie said, which may include a resolution authorizing. So the passage of this ordinance tonight, simply the important aspect is the words, "all Parks and Recreation fees." The ordinance as it stands today indicates fees for recreation programs. It does not, that does not include admission fees, membership fees, rental fees, all the different types of fees that we have. So tonight is really some cleanup of some of the language as well, that the ordinance needs to include all the fees that we currently charge. And that's what we're trying to accomplish tonight. This aspect that said, "which may include a resolution authorizing the city manager," that is going, that would be another step and another discussion because my intent is to bring back a resolution to you in April. And at the very least, it needs to include new rental fees for new facilities. And Mr. Boschamp is here tonight and is our vice chair of the Park and Rec Advisory Board, and was part of that discussion last night. And they had similar concerns, transparency, and wanting to make sure that we included the park board and the commission in those discussions setting fees. So I introduced that concept previously, as well as, as Katie said, this ordinance and our resolution originated in the eighties. And the concept of capturing cost recovery and what percentage and what amounts has been in place for quite some time. So I asked everybody the question, should we consider something different than simply as what had been in place since, potentially since the eighties? So those are debatable items, but we certainly need to make the alterations to the ordinance to make sure that it includes all fees that we charge.
Eddie, if, yeah, looking at the motion, the motion says amending it to allow Parks and Recreation fees to be set by resolution. So yeah, it doesn't, in the actual motion that they're asking us to approve, it doesn't say anything about setting the fees. It's just setting the fees by resolution, which comes from the commission, and so we still have complete control.
Yes. Again, the intent is to come to the commission in April with the resolution. And again, your guidance tonight, your direction tonight, if the majority of you aren't comfortable with setting fees administratively, or if you're not comfortable with considering some alteration to the cost recovery, I don't want to waste your time and, you know, bring you that even to consider. So I appreciate the opportunity to receive some guidance, you know, tonight in that regard. Last night with the Park and Rec Advisory Board, they weren't so favorable. They weren't comfortable with setting fees administratively, to the very reasons that you indicate, Commissioner. And, you know, I think at this point in time, they, they weren't all in agreement to increase cost recovery because it would be increasing fees.
Yeah, I just want to clarify, thank you. I just want to clarify, I was not the one who moved it to the end of the general agenda. That was Commissioner Morris. I've been thinking about it all day, and then she, when she did it, I'm sorry. Go ahead and speak to it. My apology.
One of the questions I had when I watched the Parks and Rec meeting last night is I have understood it in the past when, when you try to work with your budget, you try to recover, like on the pools, you try to recover half of the costs. Was that something from, that I made up? I'm sure there's something about collect, or.
I commented on that last night.
Collecting half. I didn't get that part of, I didn't hear that. I got a phone call or something.
We have, we have several different budgets within Parks and Recreation. And one is our swimming pool, our aquatics budget. And it's been guidance from past commissioners that we attempt to recover fifty percent of the expenses. And that's different than what we do with our recreation programs because we attempt to recover enough revenue to cover all our expenses specifically for our recreation programs. That does not consider the, the expenses that are associated with recreation administration and our full-time staff, which that budget stands alone for recreation programs. So we have different philosophical approaches, several budgets that we have in Parks and Recreation.
I just wanted to be sure that we're not trying to make up all of the hundred percent for this, in the swimming program.
I don't think that would ever even be possible because the price that we would probably attempt to charge, we wouldn't have any participation.
And there are private sectors that can do that, such as gyms and other, there are private sectors such as gyms and rec centers and such that probably do that. But I would like to hear from the Parks and Rec Board, since Mark is here, and see what, what kind of conversation they had about this item as well.
I, Mark Bashamp, I guess I had no intention of preparing anything to say for this. But yes, I agree that the, the conversation that we had, and I don't even know what this agenda, I know you told me what this was, but I don't remember what the topic was specifically. But if it's for, you know, giving control to administratively, I think you, we did have a concern about that, that we weren't able to see those numbers and see how it was impacted, and also the commission as well. I think the biggest thing from last night, the biggest takeaway is all of us were concerned. We got new gyms coming onboard, and we're still trying, we're still trying to figure out what those pricing points are. We don't want to price ourselves out of the market. And that's what I'm, and I think that's what we discussed last night, is we want to be able to have people here in tournaments or utilizing those facilities. And, and, and I think that Eddie kind of reassured us that, that we have to be competitive. We have to be not over Salina or Lawrence or any place else. And so, I mean, that was, I think, probably the biggest topic that we really, really had a big message to, to Eddie last night.
And you might even reiterate, we intend to provide the Park and Rec Advisory Board additional information, you know, comparative information, and potentially, we might meet in another special meeting in advance of the April meeting.
Right, I think.
We can accomplish that.
Right, I, right. And I think because of deadlines, and actually with Marcia being on the, on the Parks and Rec Advisory Board, she has to get things marketed to try and get tournaments here. Well, to meet the timeframe of your meetings, we all encourage, if we have to have another special meeting, to get our stuff in line prior to your April meeting, we're all in favor of that because there is a crunch on timeframe.
I appreciate this discussion. I, I didn't think there was enough information in our materials for the, to, in light of the conversation last night, I wanted to hear a further explanation.
Sure.
So thank you very much.
Sure. Happy to provide that. Appreciate the, the input.
Eddie, I, I support the, the concept, and I think, you know, you've got a staff that knows this business better than we do, so I think you can come up with some pretty good fees, and you understand the implications. And, you know, we tried years ago to get a hundred percent cost recovery out of the pools. Dismal failure, we couldn't make that happen. So, so I know the background's there, and I know your, your folks understand how to handle it. So I'm all for it. So could we get a possible motion on this?
I think Aaron wanted to say something.
I was just trying to clarify, Commissioner Morris, or, or Eddie, is there, are you suggesting that you come back with more information on this? Or are you suggesting that you need this, and then there'll be another part that you come back with more information?
Yeah, the intent was to come back to this commission with a draft resolution for you to consider. I, I guess I, sure, I'm looking for some input. Do you even want to consider administratively setting fees? And if the majority of you don't want to do that, again, I'm not going to waste your time bringing that back if you're not supportive of that. Are you supportive of a, and this is kind of the questions that I asked you also back in September in the work session, as we talked about the level of cost recovery. Should we consider increasing that cost recovery that had been in place for quite a number of years?
My, my position then, and I think I asked questions about the scholarship, how we make it equitable amongst people that can't afford, if, all those things. What I don't know now is what, why the Parks and Rec Advisory Board, what they're, they're not advising us to do anything, so I feel uncomfortable not doing, or doing something. And that I didn't watch the meeting last night, so I don't know, other than there was a lot of discussion.
Well, again, I, you know, and Mark can reiterate it, but they weren't supportive of increasing fees and supportive of the administrative aspect.
Right. There was no vote, but there was essentially a voice opinion. There was not much support for the administrative.
I think what I, what I understood is, I'm not against raising fees or administrative fees. So I want to discuss how we do pool fees now. When we discussed pool fees, at the beginning, it was really, really high. And then we brought it back to us, and we discussed the twilight fee and all of these other fees. So using that as a, an example, how does that fit into this? Would that be where we would not have a say, and you would, you would just fix the fees? The administration would just fix the fees? Is, is that what this means? Or does it mean we discuss those pool fees like annually or every two years? What, what exactly does that mean if I use that as an example?
In September, what we talked about, if we were adjusting a cost recovery aspect, it was simply for recreation programs and activities. It was not for admissions or memberships or rental fees. And we felt like all of those fees, we don't adjust those on an annual basis. Those typically are in place for many years. And so those would be listed out specifically in the resolution. And I think that was some guidance that I, or some input that I heard from you because if we were going to be adjusting admission fees, you very much wanted to be, you know, in that discussion. My recommendation was for camps, arts and crafts programs, youth sports, adult sports, those things that the, the, the cost provide that program activity fluctuates a little bit more. And setting fees administratively simply allows a quicker response to us adjust the cost of a fee based on the direct expenses associated with those, such as the cost for seasonal labor, specific materials or items, like in a pottery class, the materials that would be needed, a senior trip or tour because of the travel expense or the specific tickets, all those things that vary seasonally. Every time we offer a arts and crafts program, there's different expenses associated with that. When we have that fee set hard in the resolution, we adhere to that fee. And it doesn't always produce the exact cost recovery. We might, you know, need that hundred percent cost recovery, but we're paying attention to that set forty-dollar-a-person fee. That, you know, if you don't have the flexibility to adjust your fee to meet your cost recovery, and you have to use the set fee, it's a little harder to always attain that cost recovery goal. That's the, that was the reason in my mind that I was talking about setting fees administratively, that it's only for programs and activities. But I certainly respect and understand, you know, the, the need to make sure that we stay very transparent and we involve the advisory board and commission in that discussion.
Yeah, Haddasall here. Yeah, I have, I have no problem with you guys kind of generally setting the fees. At, at some point, I'd like to see what some of them are and maybe ask questions to have you justify why they are. But yeah, I'm, I'm more interested in, in pushing some of this low-level decision-making down to the people that know what, what things cost and what it takes and how hard it is to hire people and how much you have to pay them in order to get them. And, and that doesn't have to be filtered through us. them in order to get them. And, and that doesn't have to be filtered through us every time, I don't think anyway. So yeah, if this is going to allow things to be streamlined, but the commission can still gen, can control the big picture and the bigger programs and such, yeah, you have no interest in pricing yourselves out of customers. And we, and you have no interest in losing money and then constantly getting your system, your programs cut because they're not making enough money. So I understand you're in a position where you want the best-case scenario. And that's all we want too. And so if, if you screw up, you'll get your wrist slapped and we'll, we'll know better next time. But I really expect that you can figure this out. And, and we'll, as long as we're know about it or have some input on it and can get an explanation occasionally at times, I'm, I'm all in favor of that.
Are you making the motion?
Yes. I move that we approve ordinance number 7529, amending section 23 dash 1 of the city code to allow Parks and Recreation fees to be set by resolution.
Second, city clerk, could you please call the rule?
Commissioner Ready?
Yes.
Mayor Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner Morris?
Yes.
Commissioner Hattasol?
Yes.
Commissioner Estherbrook?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you all.